Ladies and gentlemen, I am calling the meeting to order today at 6:09 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please take a roll call?
Absolutely. Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Moby June.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
He's here.
Oh, he's here. Oh, okay. Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. And because of our delighted Chief of Staff who brought us all guests today, I'm going to have her lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Staff Maran Hernandez, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have City Council Resident Recognition. I'm actually going to move up. And then I'm going to contact, call up our very own Councilman Ahmad. Usually we get up here and, you know, Councilman Ahmad comes over here. And I want you guys to know that this initiative started because Councilman Ahmad has felt he needed to take it upon himself to recognize, outside of us being recognized from being on council or recognizing our colleagues, he felt that it was important to recognizing businesses, some of our council members. And really, I just wanted to share the note that he has kind of put it in me and I believe many of the council members that are like, well, hey, we want to recognize this individual. We want to recognize that individual. And, you know, for many years that I've watched these council meetings or being on the council, no council member has really taken that initiative. And so today, I'm recognizing Councilman Ahmad for this initiative, where tonight, he is going to continue to recognize three amazing individuals. I asked him that, you know, can you do what you always do, write something real nice? These are three individuals that I truly admire, I respect. I think that the city is lucky to have. And so I'm going to call up Councilman Ahmad. Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you very much, Council Chair. Today, also Chair, we are celebrating three amazing individuals who formed the backbone, the backbone, is this on? The backbone of the Ian Center, contributing their time and energy to ensure its success. Their dedication and selfishness are evident in every task they undertake, making them invaluable members of our volunteer team. These individuals are always the first to volunteer for special events, are quick to offer assistance whenever needed. Their commitment to the Ian Center is truly inspiring, and we are grateful for their continued support and involvement. Rose Trapepe, Gail Bergerstock, and Lou Scott play a better role in the success of the Ian Center. They generously volunteered their time and effort in various capacities, always willing to help out at special events and stepping in whenever needed. Their dedication is emblematic of their spirit, of the spirit of our volunteer team at the center. Additionally, they are active attendees at council meetings, ensuring that they stay informed and engage with the community. Rose has been dedicated volunteer at the Ian's office and center for several years. She's actively involved in the Italian Club and has been a longtime advocate for the Ian Center, Senior Center.
And the UAW.
And the UAW. Lou is an integral part of the Ian Center, volunteering for the Meals on Wheels program and assisting at parties for years. He is valuable member of the Ian community and is renowned for his delicious zucchini bread that I'm still yet to try, though.
And he's never won seat volleyball ever.
Gail has been committed volunteer for the Meals on Wheels program as well and building maintenance at the Ian Center for many years. Her contributions have been recognized through awards such as the Dearborn Heights Senior Citizen of the Year and the Margaret Whitehead Senior Citizen of the Year. Gail is a delightful presence at the center, as they say. And I had the honor to see their work firsthand and, you know, playing chair volleyball with them many times. Ladies and gentlemen, Council Chair, please welcome our audience this evening.
It's okay.
Okay.
All right. Ladies first, huh Lou?
Yeah.
Ladies first. Gail, this is yours.
Woo, Gail!
We're going to get her to come around, by the way. You can sit around. We're waiting on Rose. Sorry. Sorry Lou, we're going to let the ladies go first. And then here's you guys. You guys got a special photographer? Council members, you guys want to take a photo? Like that, Lou?
Yeah.
You were concealed three times.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Do you want to go over here?
Yeah, we're going to come over here, ladies.
Are we going here?
Lou.
Over there. Over here.
Come on, ladies. By the way, I want this photo. I'm going to frame this photo.
Perfect.
Okay, now everyone look here.
Do I have town?
No. That's what I do with kids.
Did you get a good one?
Are you still looking at the sun, Dad?
About one more round of applause. All right. Let's get down to business. Your initiative. Good job. That was nice. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. One more time, guys, congratulations. Rose, you don't want to give us a speech or anything? No, no, we're not going to. We're not going to have Rose. Maybe Gail or Lou. Rose, no.
What's the date?
That's funny.
You know what? We're going to add it. We're going to, I promise you it'll be added to the next one. Or, you know what, if we have Mrs. Sauer here.
She's here.
Four more cheers for the Ian Center. Can we get that taken care of? There you go. All said and done. Thank you. Next up, we did have two be Crestwood High School's Drama Club presentation. They unfortunately weren't able to attend, so I'll just kind of give a quick synopsis on, if I can. I know that they are having a drama play, and they do a phenomenal job. I believe the director, my brother was actually part of the Drama Club there, and they, and, and, her name is again, give me it again? Yep, Kaya. She does a great job. She does a phenomenal job. They do a show every year. If you guys have not.
Two or three.
Okay. Two or three. See, I'm going to do my best. I'm going to do my best. I don't know how many they do, but I know that these plays are absolutely amazing. These are high schoolers that go above and beyond. We've even had some of our high schools that were part of this Drama Club go out to Disney. I went, I went to school with Trevor, I believe his name was.
Gary?
Gary. Gary. And there was another individual, I think they made it far. He ends up working in Disney. His name was Trevor. He made it out to Disney. He was running all the lighting and whatnot. Anyhow, the good news is, congratulations to them. Go out and support them. Can I give you a date yet? I don't have that in front of me.
I'll look.
But maybe a closing remarks, we'll have our clerk give you that information. So stay tuned to the end for those who are at home and those who are here with us today. I do see a very hefty meeting here. I'm going to ask to my colleagues, we don't want to spend too much time. I don't want, you know, I know some of our minutes will say we're going a little faster. Let's keep the wheels spinning here. I gave George my word that we try to get out of here by at least 8:45. It's the last day of fasting. Tomorrow's Eid. I think many of us just want to go home, enjoy, break our final, break our final piece of bread with our family and friends. With that said, next up is number three, Agenda Approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agenda for the regular meeting of April 9th, 2024, as submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, second by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on the Agenda Approval? I actually do. I am going to ask that we table 7A, City Engineer Debe, Better Award for City-Owned Property and Auction Services. I should have actually never had this added to the agenda. I do take full responsibility on that. I'd like to sit down with the mayor. Maybe mayor means you can sit down together, maybe come up with a good plan, strategically work together, instead of just, you know, because we just had a study session on this mayor. And I think, you know, you brought Daybor here. I think some of this council is starting to see that. Having a discussion, you and I, cordial, good conversation. I think, you know, it's something that needs to happen. Maybe our Corporation Council can be there. But till then, I think the decision was already made by this council. And so I would, I am going to ask for 7A to be tabled.
I'll second. I'll support that.
Well, hang on. I'm going to hear from the mayor. Go ahead.
Is there, okay, so what's the process? I watched the study session. So do you guys want to put your, like, your folks, your certain real estate agents to sell this property? I mean, what's the?
That's insulting, Mayor, so I'm going to tell you, point of order. Point of order, Mayor. Point of order.
Again, I watched the council meeting.
You should. What those people are, are from this community.
Doesn't matter, Council Chair.
It is Daybor that you've asked for their support and their endorsement. This has nothing to do with it. This is a, this is a, this is an ethical board, Mayor. It's an ethical board. Please refrain from ever insinuating that we would do anything in that nature, because that's derogatory and it's wrong and you shouldn't be acting that way.
Okay, well, can I speak?
If it's going to be derogatory, I'm going to ask you to not speak.
Well, I need to say something. Okay.
You can say something, but please, do not, do not insinuate that this council.
I'm not, I'm not talking to my.
You can't control what he says.
I'm, yeah, please.
Well, can I?
Roger, you should be point of ordering him and not point of ordering me.
No, what I'm saying is that we've had other derogatory comments coming towards people. If his first amendment.
He said people that we know.
His first amendment.
And he called us folks, too.
He's not disrespectful and he's not disturbing.
That was extremely disrespectful, Roger. Point of order, Roger. I don't need your opinion. I don't need it. Point of order, Council Chair. Let's move on. Let's move on. We don't need even this discussion, Council Chair. Point of order.
Can I finish?
Please, I'm going to be respectful.
I'm going to talk about this item that was.
Be respectful.
Okay. This process, again, it's the most transparent process. We went out for bid and companies came in and they bid on it. Okay, they bid on the list of property to be very transparent, so everybody, anybody can bid on that property, not certain individuals. Okay, by, by that, okay, it's not costing the city anything. It's not like an entity, it's, it's going to go out for bid. Any, any individual can bid on that property.
So can anybody else that puts it on there, too?
What is it?
So can anybody that's going to operate through Daybor, that's going to run the same way Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac operates? If you were here at the meeting and you took on these questions, you would have known that.
We want to, Council Chair, we went out for a bid and that's all we came up with.
Yeah.
So the process we had at the study session was never offered bid.
Mayor, I'm going to vote no. So if you want me to leave it on, I'm going to vote no.
No, go ahead.
Time out. Time out. Point of order, Councilman. I'm going to vote no. If this council passes, this is a democracy. But what I, what I did ask for you.
Because I need, I need to have it documented.
What I did ask, you documented on the last time, and nothing's going to change.
Well, there's several council members were not at that meeting last time. It was at least two council members were not present.
Yeah, I don't know the, do you know, can you have them in front of you?
Well, I mean.
No.
They can ask. I can tell you there's.
Who are, yeah, who are they?
I know that Councilwoman, I think Councilman Wenzel was not there. I don't know if he was there.
Councilmen?
Councilman Wenzel, Councilwoman Denise Maxwell was not there at the meeting when they voted on the item.
I was here.
Yeah, she was here.
Was it, well, I know two council, I don't have that agenda in front of me, but two council members were not there.
I missed one a long time ago when I had surgery.
Anyhow, Mayor, I'm going to tell you like I asked when we first started.
Well, Council Chair.
If you don't want to sit down with me, that's fine.
No, I'll sit down with you.
Thank you.
We need to come up with the process. We're wasting a lot of money.
That's what we're going to sit down for. It doesn't got to be controversial.
No, just send me an email. Let me know or we'll sit down.
Roger, can you put them in?
I'll make sure you guys, we sit down.
Thank you. I'd like, that's it.
I asked to go out for a bid.
Yeah, that's fine. It's fine.
Yeah, anybody can bid on it.
Council Chair.
Point of order, Council Chair. Sit down. Please.
Hey, guys, listen, I started this meeting saying, let's not be hostile. Just everybody calm down. Roger, please. Thank you. So I'm going to ask to remove 7A, because I feel like me and the, me and the mayor need to sit down, maybe with Roger, maybe Council Chair Pro Tem, and have a cordial conversation, because the mayor expressed to me in an email and when it was actually turned down, hey, let me know the process that you guys want to go about. I didn't know he was saying it out of spite. I thought he was saying it because he truly was sincere about it. I had a study session, you know, Daybor showed up, the mayor did not show up. And so now I'm requesting that we sit down and we have a discussion on it. That's all. It's nothing personal, it's nothing, you know, oh, we don't want this. I don't even know who BitCorp is. And let me tell you, if you were here at the meeting, this, this board that came here, it's an ethics board. That's what it is. It's an ethics board. This is not somebody folks that we know. No, these are community members that are from this community. And there's nothing wrong with saying, let this community represent this community. There's nothing wrong with that. Nothing at all. Please, Roger, point of order. Thank you. So I'm going to ask for 7A to be removed. Councilman Saab and Councilwoman Breyer, that is up to you guys, but we can make a vote on that. Would you like to amend your motion on there?
For what?
For remove 7A.
I support it.
Okay. Councilwoman Breyer, do you second that?
I don't support it.
Okay.
I can, I can second that.
Seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any other discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
What's the main reason you want to take this off? It's just because you want to go through different process of?
Yeah, I, I, let me tell you, Councilman. We have, we have requested many times, especially on these properties, that if we're going to go out for bids on these things, one, let's be more transparent. I've asked for over a year, like you've asked for many things over a year. Put this on Facebook, put this on social media, put this on Instagram, put this on our website. Hey, people, go out and bid, because that didn't happen, right? We went on BitCorp, we went out there for three weeks, we picked, we saw three people, we picked a company that's one firm, Keller Williams in West Bloomfield. One person is going to represent all these properties. And like Councilman Coniston stated last time, how many people are you really going to get that are going to bid on auctioneers? Let me tell you who's not going to bid on auctioneers, first-time homebuyers. You're going to get a lot of investors that are going to do that. This is the same reason why we said we, you know, nothing against having landlords, but this body has all said, we need to find a way to control and bring in more first-time homebuyers into our community. We're a bedroom community. That's what we are. What's happening now is, is our community is being stripped away by people investing in our community, bringing in these tenants and saying, I live in Florida, I don't care what you do with the house. It's happening.
I'll tell you, if, if this brings in the possibility of more individuals bidding on to live in those houses.
100% it is.
I'm, I'm in favor of that. Are we going to take this to a, some kind of another?
Yeah.
What's the next step? If, if we take it off the agenda, what's the next?
I'm going to sit down with the mayor, Roger, and if you want to join, you're more than welcome. But I think ultimately, BitCorp is in the route. I don't believe, I don't want to see an auction. I don't. I think what needs to happen is you need to offer like this, if you were here at the study session, what, what the ethics board, because I want to reiterate, it's an ethics board. That's what it is. It isn't folks that we know. It's an ethics board. And so what this ethics board does is, they said the first 20 days, they will open it only for first-time homebuyers or people that want to live in it. And if that property doesn't sell within the first 20 or 30 days, they're going to open it up to investors after that. You know who does that? Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac. The federal government does that. We, we are literally not, we're not reinventing the wheel. We are sticking to the process that our own government does. You know, you know what most investors, you know what most first-time homebuyers are going to think when they go to an auctioneer? At least for myself and somebody who's somewhat in the business. If you go to this auction right here, you're going to have to pay cash, because that's what most people believe. The misconception is that.
Council Chair.
Yeah, I agree. I'll go along with that.
Council Chair, just to answer back to Tom, Mr. Wenzel. So at the study session that we had, BitCorp was here and the gentleman came up and talked. And he was blunt about it. And he said it would make, it made it impossible for anybody to bid on this bid, because you had to have a D4 license, the way it was written. And this was not only, and this was not only for real estate. We found out it was for cars, boats, canoes, whatever else it was, and homes. It wasn't just for homes. But he said that he really didn't want the real estate.
It was a couple of months ago, right?
No, 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 yeah.
Did he, was it the same guy that was here a couple of months?
Yeah, last week.
Yeah, so he basically said the same thing.
Yeah, he said that he was forced into taking it all, because it made it impossible for any Joe Smith to go bid it.
Now, I also want to keep in mind, and I want you guys also keep in mind.
Go through the Board of Realtors. And just for Tom Wenzel, sorry, Council Chair. The city of Dearborn brings in the Dearborn Board of Realtors to sell their property and they get top dollar for it.
And I want to give you example of what happened and why this is, why I'm so adamant about it. I can care less if it's Daybor, Chee Board, Josh McAlachi, I don't care who it is, okay? But I want to tell you that there was an incident in Dearborn where Suzanne DeBajer was the council president at the time. Somebody bid it on a property due just like this. The auctioneer accepted a property at $140,000 while somebody offered $230,000. The resident showed up here with his client and said, why was this accepted at 140 when I applied, when I applied for $230,000? Why did I not get this offer? The city council stopped, said, what was, what was going on with this auctioneer? They fired this auctioneer. They accepted the 230 because they brought more revenue to the city. The person was awarded the property and Daybor took over the remaining of the properties, because it's an ethics board, Councilman.
The only, the only issue I have is having an investor come in and bid over the asking price.
Well, that's what's going to happen if you have an auctioneer.
Yeah, I mean, it's bid individually. So if we could, if we set up some parameters where it can only be people that own or occupy.
Yeah, so if you're, but make it, not just recommend, you know, occupy, but make it a stipulation. If you were at the study session and I know you're on vacation and I hope you enjoyed yourself, that's exactly what they discussed. They said what we are going to offer is a 20, 30-day. Only person that can, that like bid on this will be first-time homebuyers for the first 30 days. And if it's not sold.
First-time homebuyers that would not lease the property, right?
No, correct, yeah, first-time homebuyers.
They had to live in the property.
There's going to be a deed restriction.
Yeah, there's going to be a deed restriction first. Or, or I even offered them, you know, can we do what Westland is doing? Westland is saying, we're going to give you back money to your closing cost up to 3% or 6% if you buy this property and live in it for the first five to six years. If you do, if you sell within the five, six years, you're owed to the city back $10,000. There's so many different routes.
Sounds good to me.
Just going straight to BitCorp. That's why I asked the mayor if we can sit down, maybe Roger can be there. And the best part about all this, BitCorp said, I'll work with you guys on the properties. So my conversation with the mayor was, how do we figure out to get them both to work together? That's it. There doesn't need to be all this fiasco all the time. So I'm asking for 7A to be removed, so I can have a discussion with the mayor, Corporation Council, and possibly the Council Chair Pro Tem. Anything wrong with that?
Nope, that's good.
Any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, 7A removed.
Now we have a few other items.
Well, that's, we're not there, Councilman, yet.
We're not.
Next up, we have the Approval of Minutes.
Council Chair.
For a Minutes of the Special Meeting of March 26, 2024.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the Minutes for the Special Meetings of March 26, 2024, as submitted.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion on that?
Yes.
These are minutes.
No, sorry.
Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have Minutes from the Regular Meeting of March 26, 2024.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the Minutes for the Regular Meeting of March 26, 2024, as submitted.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have public hearings and comments on agenda items only. This is going to be regarding agenda items only, not public comments. I'm going to start off with the, I'm going to start off with the audience and then we'll go over to Zoom. Are you speaking as a resident of the city or are you speaking as the Chief of Staff of the City of Dearborn Heights?
I'm speaking as the Chief of Staff for the City of Dearborn Heights, and I would just like to request that claims 31 through 36 be removed. Those are not actually invoices. Those are just notifications.
I have it on my notes.
Thank you.
I have it on my notes. Thank you so much. Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor Vince Strapkowski, Columbia Street. I was going through the agenda items and bills and stuff like that were out there. Maybe this is being taken off. Unfortunately, I can't find it on my phone right now. But it was a bill for $10,000 to clean up the alleyway for the, by the hookah bar up here off of George and that vacant property.
Tree stumping. I saw it. $10,000.
$10,000. Okay. Why are we cleaning that up for 10 grand when the owner of that property adjacent to the Hookah Lounge and that owns the property that where the apartments are hasn't cleaned up his property in five years since that apartment complex has been done? It was brought forth to the Ordinance Department and obviously the Ordinance Department has done nothing with it. So can we get something done before we pay this bill or, or, you know, to remove stumps in the, in the cleanup trash and straighten out a wall?
Mayor, would you like to?
Was that wall damaged for the construction that was going on?
That's one of the claims, Council Chair. We talked about it when you get to the claims.
Okay, Mr. Debe, you want to talk on that?
It's never been, no, I mean, I mean, the proper procedures. You guys, you can ask me that question, but are we changing the rubble rules of order? Answer the invoices during public comments? Because that was never been processed.
It's part of the agenda packet. So my question is, I don't recall it going out for bid.
Okay, technically, the mayor's correct. Unless there's a resolution in place, we're not supposed to be speaking about claims. I will tell you, though, that it's something that I have written down. Crazy, both you and the Chief of Staff took the two things that I have written down, other than 7A.
Okay, because I just don't recall it going out for bid. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Rock and roll.
Good evening, Sue Kaminsky, Ambrose Street, Dearborn Heights. In looking at the claims also, there is a bill for Mr. Schenk. And I thought that council had said that it was a conflict of interest to utilize Mr. Schenk's services, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments on agenda items only? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom?
Madam Clerk, can you see anybody?
Okay. Then we'll go up next to number six. Before we move forward on this, I do not want to spend 20, 30, 45 minutes on this. Let's be quick on this. If you don't like something, if you feel that you have a question to the administration, ask. If they don't want to ask, we're not going to do the back and forth. Please. All right, next up, we have Fun Transfers and Current Claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved current claims and ACH wire transfer 61 through 650, as submitted.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell. Are we going to remove those 31 through? Uh, yep. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, before doing so, can you amend your motion? Well, we're just going to amend it. I'm sure you're going to have some discussion, but keep in mind that we're going to be removing 31 through 36. On the bottom of 31 through 36, it says that this is just a copy of your information. I think Roger was just so used to typing in a account number that he signed in. Do you want an account number on there? Yeah, sorry, I can't hear you, Roger.
My nose is, and I can't hear you guys either. I, I think the, the, it was not supposed to be put on the agenda, but I was just reviewing them.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
And then, yeah, go ahead, Councilman.
I'd like to remove item number 20, 22, and 50.
20, 22.
And 50.
50. 20 is Riley. Okay. Silvio, 22.
That's the P R F C O S M I P.
I don't know what that is.
Uh, it's for a trip for the acting chief.
Okay, and number 50.
50 is uh.
There is outdoor services, yep. Um, well, I had a couple of questions regardless. Is there anything else?
No, I believe that is it.
I, I have a question for.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think, no, go ahead.
Maybe um, Mr. Turner, if you don't mind stepping up real quick. I'm, I, I reviewed number, the Plant Moran emails that you sent over about the request.
Oh, with, with the hours and these, with the hours and the services?
And then give them a breakdown, you know, it's a big number.
Yes, sir.
And have they got anything back? Because I, according to the email, nothing has really changed there.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
The email that you sent over, going back and forth on requesting it, there was an attachment that says see attached?
Yes.
I don't think the attachment was actually given to it.
Uh, hold on one second, I'll look.
It's okay, just I want to receive. Did you receive the attachment?
Yes.
Okay, and they gave you a breakdown of everything?
Yes.
And it was, you could say it was detailed?
Yes, it was very detailed.
I'm okay with it then. I, I think, Mr. Turner, I, I take your word for it. I do. I appreciate you for, and I read, I, I went through it, I read the emails, the back and forth of, you know, and, and the backup. Um, it was on, um, 315, so I appreciate that and I appreciate Plant Moran. I just asked, you know, we keep these, just still please forward that over to me.
I will do that as soon as I sit down.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Those are my questions. Um, Mr. Conrad? Do you have anything to do with uh number 50 with Gary's Outdoor Services?
Council chair.
Mayor.
It came to our office, so you want me to explain?
Sure.
Okay, so the company, we actually had a contract with them uh before. We contacted three companies to come in and do an emergency cleanup for the wall. Uh, the wall, if you guys go by the Blue Moon, it's leaning, it's ready to uh tip over to the parking lot. It's a, it was an emergency uh fix trying to get rid of the stumps. There was a lot of stumps that were pushing the wall. There was some debris that, you know, that, that's city property, by the way. It's not uh the business property. Where the, where the stumps were, um, it was on the city property. And when they were doing a lot of work over there, they did, I think there was a water main break or something a few years ago. So whatever they had, they stuck it by the wall. So the, the wall was leaning towards the business and that's where the parking lot is. So if the wall, well, if you go by there right now, or a few days, or I didn't go by there today. But a few days ago, they had two by fours try to support the wall while we're doing the work. That wall was on the, was on the verge of collapsing. It was gonna tip over. And if it falls on anybody, it's gonna be the city. So it's a liability to the city.
Mayor, I got a question for you. When did this work be done?
Uh, it was done on March 27th.
So it was just done with the wall, there is a new owner there, correct?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you. Uh, this, I'm, I'm gonna, I, I, at least for myself, I would honor in keeping it. Uh, you know, ultimately, this is democracy, the council will do whatever it wants. All because of the severity of, of what you say you needed. But I just want you to know that that's a violation of the charter. And so you're, you're a violation of the charter. Please, one second, point of order. Uh, it's a violation of the charter, um, because, you know, do you have any photos of, of how this uh thing was looking?
I'll send it to you.
And was there any engineering testing done to say that, hey, this thing was about to collapse and we can't come to council and we can't go out for bids on this?
Um, the building director went and inspected it.
I know. I'm familiar.
Yes.
I'm familiar, I'm familiar with the property, familiar with what's going on. You know? Any other discussion?
Yes, council chair. I got a question. How many stumps was this? And the debris from the water main break, isn't the DPW in charge of that? I mean, if they were leaving stuff around and having, paying third party companies to go and bid it. And then we got this company that came out here, Gray's Outdoor. But we also have another company out here, I think it's called Tom Ridge Stumping. Why, why don't we get a quote from them? And where are the other quotes that were in here?
Well, it was an emergency, according to the mayor.
Um, just how many stumps was it?
Three.
Uh, let me see, Mr. Conrad, how many truck loads did they take to DPW? I know there was about three trucks of stumps that they took, three, three big trucks. They haul to DPW.
Well, we have, you said you have photos of everything?
There was photos of the wall. I, I can forward you.
Okay. Do we have photos of all the debris of the before and afters?
Um, I, I gotta check to see what photos they sent me, but I, I went looked at it.
Council chair.
Before and after they, they cleaned it up.
Councilman Ahmad. If you want, we can table, I mean, we can take this off until we have more pictures and more stuff.
Right, I agree.
If you agree. Okay. Let's move on. We could table this and you can send them over to us and then we can add it to the next uh agenda. Any other, any other discussions?
I guess you guys don't trust me.
That's funny.
That's why we're administration.
No.
You don't trust me, you don't trust me, so I'll, I'll, I'll get the information. And several directors, one looked at it, council chair.
It's not, it's not about trust.
Yeah, but we're holding $10,000 for this company.
I, I understand, we just held almost a million dollars for Plant Moran gap. They got us the information, we approved it. But you know, I want you to know, it's not about a trusting mayor, it's about check and balance. If that was the case, like, this council shouldn't be here. You know, you should just be operating everything and get rid of the council. We should be obsolete. Because that seems like what's happening right now.
It's an emergency repair.
What is it?
It was an emergency, like I said, so.
You want, you know what I think really happened? Since you keep saying it's an emergency, I think the property was just recently sold. Uh, there were, there are new business owners. They wanted it fixed, we went ahead and fixed it. That's what really happened.
Okay, you may have the doctor call you and he can verify that. I'll have him call you tomorrow.
Who's that?
The owner of the property.
Yeah, have the owner, I'm not gonna be intimidated by any of your friends or anybody wants to call me.
But that statement you made was false.
Yeah, I mean, the statement you made that, that we're, we're operating with people from Dayboard, that's a nothing board.
The owner of the property is still the same, council chair.
Point of order. Thank you.
Still the same owner, by the way. It hasn't changed ownership.
No, it hasn't, it's been sold. Is Rick on here?
Yes.
Rick, do you want to speak? I mute Rick Wallen, please.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So there was 18 stumps pushing on the wall. And that's why we had to get that.
Whose property is that?
Uh, the property is still the same owner, they only sold the business.
I understand that. So the business was sold, but I'm asking, the trees are on whose property? The city or was it on the other side of the wall?
It is on the city.
It was on the city side, so it was in the alley?
Yes, it's on the city side and a tree fell about nine years ago. And I mean, it was probably three foot round and the stump was still there. So they had to dig it out. It wasn't just a matter of grinding the stump, they had to dig it all the way past the footing to get it up without tearing the wall down.
It'd been there for nine years?
Yeah, nine years.
So that is an emergency?
Well, the, the problem is, is the, the wall has pushed over so far because the pressure from all the stumps. And by the dumpster, it was, it was kind of falling over.
And, and Mr. Wallen, we have photos of all of that information, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, council members, what would you guys like to do here? Just keep it the same, council chair, if you don't mind. I mean, whether it's an emergency or not, let's get in the habit of having pictures before and after. Timestamped, so we can see exactly what's going on.
Council chair, um, how long were these trees, how long were these trees cut down?
They were just recently done.
Recently, the trees were cut down?
Yes. No, he said three years ago.
No, no. It's been a long time.
We cut it down three years ago?
Five years ago.
I mean, dead, dead stumps, they can't push on a wall anymore.
I agree, I agree. I mean, you don't, you're, you're preaching to the choir right now.
I mean, I mean, they might be a problem, they, they might have pushed it to where it is now when they're alive. But they're not gonna push it anymore. You know, they, you have to get out, maybe the roots are in a way where the wall can't be put back, so if all the roots, if, if all the, every bit of the roots were removed, then, then that, that solved the problem. Every root that's pushing them, did push the wall, because it's not pushing it anymore. Right now, it's just, they're stopped right there, those roots are dead, they're stopped right at the wall.
Hundred percent. Thank you, Mr. Wallen. Okay, guys, we're gonna move on. I didn't want to spend 45 minutes here. Any other discussion on, on this? Hearing none, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by uh Councilwoman Minalowski Maxwell. Uh, to remove, are you guys gonna amend your motions to remove 20, 20, 22, and 50?
Right, we got 31 to 36.
And we're gonna remove 31 through 36 as well.
Yeah.
Those are just gonna be removed, that's not coming back. All right?
Council chair, to pay the rest of the claims, right?
What is it?
To pay the rest of the claims, in other words, we're not gonna vote twice.
Correct, correct. So we're gonna remove and then to um pay the remaining. So just to remove 31 through 36. 20, 22, and 50.
Council chair.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I don't want to hold up someone's pay. I mean, is this gonna be on the next, our next meeting?
I mean, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get the information.
Yeah, not, because, you know, it's not their fault in any way. They did, they, they offered the work and they did the work.
How many, how many times is this going to happen where, where your position doesn't matter?
I know, I'm just saying, let's get it back on as soon as possible.
Yeah.
With the proper.
Um, Madam Clerk, do you have those written down? The ones that are removed?
No, 20, 22.
Amendment motion? Any other discussion? Yep. Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it. Roger, I'm so sorry. I believe you were supposed to get an opinion letter for us uh regarding using forfeiture funds and, and expenses other than certain uh things, maybe like traveling or whatnot. You said you were gonna get us that information? You recall?
Well, yeah, I don't recall that. But in any case, I did work on it um to uh, I've gone back and forth. I'm talking with Pam, um, the prosecutors. I did speak with the um, the Wayne County prosecutor in charge of forfeiture. Um, the problem that we're, we're facing is the issue of forfeiture is controlled by a statute. It's regulated by the Michigan State Police. It's audited by the Michigan State Police. The question, um, and Don Rensel and I have gone back and forth on the issue of how, the, the, the funds have to be kept in the treasury or the, the agency that supervises the police department. That's it. It doesn't speak about whether the city council can interfere with the use of the funds if a proper designated purpose by statute, such as training, is permitted by the statute. If they mess up, the state police steps in, not the city council, not the treasurer, not our auditors. The state police regulates it.
I'll ask.
So what I have to do is, I just have the one more thing to check with it. I've done my due diligence, but I just want to make sure, and we do have something in writing, but.
So you are gonna give us an opinion letter?
Yeah, I should have it by the next meeting.
Because what keeps happening here is that we've been waiting on your opinion letter.
No, actually, um, I said I should go forward. You, you haven't told me you needed it and that's what's holding anything up. I don't know why, I still don't know though, why you don't want to approve it. I don't, I haven't heard.
That's a great question. And so I'm gonna tell you, um, I'll even cut the meeting part for you where I said, can we use that? Roger, give us an opinion that we can use forfeiture, forfeiture funds for it. You said I will have that for you. Clearly, you've been doing the work, now we're just waiting.
I have a good, I, I did it because I wanted to make sure I was correct. No one asked me that, I remember that to do so. However, the holdup has not been because you're waiting for an opinion letter.
Well, maybe, maybe you just misheard, you didn't hear us, but that's what, at least for myself. So I'm giving you, since you don't know, I'm giving you the information.
I'm not saying I don't know. I'm saying that I do not recall you saying that. However.
Thank you.
The issue is, it's been taken off five times
Yeah.
without any explanation why it's been taken off.
Well, because we have a court order, you've told us not to speak and not to talk.
No, it's nothing to do with it, no, it's nothing to do with the court.
Yeah, you have, Roger, come on, man.
No, that's not an issue of the court order. It's the reason for taking it off has not been explained.
I'm, I'm explaining to you right now.
Because there's a court order?
No, I never talked about it because there's a court order. I'm explaining because I've been waiting on an opinion letter from you. I think even Councilman Constant talked about forfeiture funds and being, being able to be uh taken out.
My opinion is that it, you shouldn't have any say on it because the forfeiture funds are controlled by statute and M S D. But we, we have it in writing, I'll put it in writing.
Thank you, there you go.
But that's not the holdup. I just want to be clear for the record.
Why, why, why wouldn't?
That's not, that's not been your holdup for vote, not taking that off the election, just be clear. Do not say I did something I did not do.
Hey.
Or, or I didn't do something I was supposed to do. Because every time you ask me to do something, I do my best to make sure it's done.
Okay. Well, in case you didn't hear me the last time, please give us an opinion letters. That way, we want to make sure that we are being protected from a bi-legal counsel telling us we're not doing anything wrong.
I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you for the direction.
Councilman Sob.
Can we get that opinion directly from you, not a third party?
Yeah, uh, but it's in consultation with third parties, absolutely.
But it just, it seems that.
It has to be.
But I asked you yesterday, a question when we were here, about these bills we just turned down for an attorney, for your fees. Every email we send, it seems like it's going out for an opinion through another party.
I've, I've.
Hold on, Roger, please. Um, and when I asked you yesterday, I was like, can I get those opinions in order for us to pay it? You said, no, they're confidential.
Can I just say, you, you have a tendency, councilman, to make up allegations or statements that are not true. I never said that to you. I said that sometimes the second opinions, I go off the second opinions.
Let's move on.
I'm a trial attorney. When I do anything, I have expert witnesses, I do depositions, I bring people in and I use and work with them to come up with an opinion. I've written at least three opinions that I've sent to the clerk that I have written. In fact, when Mr. Wenzel asked the, the opinion about whether to take the planning commission out and take your vote to here, I wrote the legal opinion. However, I consulted with at least three attorneys, Gary Miyake's previous opinion before I wrote it. That's what I said to you.
No?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, guys, I want to go back.
Please.
Thank you. Let's ask, please, councilman. Thank you.
Council chair.
Councilwoman Breyer.
Well, I'd like to make the statement that we're supposed to be in favor of training for the people. And this is a special opportunity. A very small group of law enforcement executives go each year and we've been offered that option. And should the money come from the police forfeiture, uh, forfeiture account, then it's not ours that's being spent. And as Roger stated, it's controlled by statute, so I don't see why we can't go along with it.
Thank you.
I will also include, council chair, there's a letter from 2001 that I researched, a member of.
Roger.
From Ruth Canfield about the issue about the training and the need. And then I have the vote from the city council from 2001 that approved training for, uh, and paying for the reimbursement fees. I will include that in the.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys. All right, next up, we have consideration of bids, city engineer, deep, actually, we remove that. Reports from the mayor, sale of vacant land, AA.
Council chair.
Councilman Sob.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights, I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized a sale of parcel number 33015030396001 to Mr. Nadal Azaruni for 25,000 as outlined in AA.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant. Um, any discussion on this? Any discussion on this?
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Ahmad.
I don't see why we need to approve any sales right now. It's still, we don't have a process in place. Like, we still, we didn't even agree if we're going to go to bid, or if we're going to send, you know, list the properties or something. I think we should table this and until we, you know, come up with a process. And then the individual, I would love to sell it to the neighbor, but the individual can bid on it at that time.
I got a quick question. I don't know who's in charge of this reports from the mayor. So may I be mayor, you can answer this, or if the resident is here. If you don't mind, I just have a couple of questions. Do you own the house? Are you the?
Answer the podium. Good evening. My name is Nadal Arzouni. I'm the owner of the house.
Okay, so you own the house to which way, the left or the right?
The left.
Okay. You live there with your family?
No, I actually have a tenant, but I'm planning to, because it's small now for my family, I'm planning to make an extension for the house. But the lot is not conforming. It's 39 feet wide. And we've been using this lot, and we're maintaining it for a long time. And we'd have, we'd like to add it in a legal way.
Thank you. And, you know, I only asked that question, by the way, to my council members. If it's a lot that can't be built on, he owns the property next door. Council Chair. Hang on one second, Councilman. Hang on, hang on. I'm fair game. I just want you to know, if the lot is not big enough to build on, he's been maintaining it. We are going to sell it to potentially build a, you know, bigger home and double the lot. City is no longer forced to, you know, technically maintain it. I'm okay with something like that. That's, I'm speaking for myself. I can't speak for the rest of this body.
Council Chair.
Hang on one second, Councilman. But you can assure me, sir, that a regular home cannot be built there?
I don't know what the size of the lot, but the lot, the where, the house that they have there is not conforming. It's less than 40 feet lot. And, and as I told you, we've been using that lot, we're taking care of it, or even the previous owner, the same thing.
Council Chair, if you don't mind, he's talking about the property he owns that's not confirming. It's a smaller lot. The lot he's trying to buy is six, almost 69 frontage. That you can build, it's almost a double lot. So it's 68, 60 by 132 deep. So he's talking about the property he owns right now that's not confirming. Basically, if he knocks the house down, he cannot rebuild the house. So he needs a bigger lot to, you know, if he wants to make the house bigger, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah. So we're talking about the property next door he's trying to buy, and it's almost 69 frontage.
And how deep is it?
The 69, almost 69 frontage. The code to build in Dearborn Heights now, it's 40 frontage. So you have an extra sized lot.
Okay, see, I didn't know that. And again, I'm sorry, I don't know any, I don't, I'm not familiar with this information, but I'd like to state, like, finding land in Dearborn Heights is very, very, very rare.
Yeah, as I said, we've been using it and.
I know. And look, I'm, you're preaching to the choir, but, you know, when he gives out numbers like, hey, it's almost, you said almost a double lot, you said, Councilman?
Almost.
Almost a double lot?
I mean, double lot is 80 frontage. This is almost 70. So it's short of like almost 11 feet.
Okay, that's a big lot.
If you don't mind, Council Chair, if you don't mind, so if you don't mind me asking, you just came up with the, with the price and that, or somebody told you?
No, no, I have to start somewhere. I don't know where.
Ah, okay.
That's why we get that price, and because we can add it just, you know, for extra space for the house, you know?
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Councilman Ahmad, maybe you know, what's the average price per footage, one foot of footage? I mean, is it like, is that, is that a good deal, or is that a?
I mean, no. I mean, it's not, it's a good deal for the buyer, not for the city, definitely.
What would you say if you were to list this today?
I mean, a lot like this, probably I can sell it for $100,000 easy.
Okay, well, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye. Those opposed?
Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Yes. Denise Malinowski, MEXO.
No.
Tom Wenzel.
No.
Hassan Ahmad.
No.
Nancy Breyer.
No.
Moby Dune.
I wish you would have came up with a little bit more money on this, but.
I mean, we can put more, but not $100,000, you know?
No.
Put the SEV. That's why I think we need the process in place, so people can.
Hassan Sab.
We're in the middle of a vote, guys.
Hassan Sab.
No.
And Robert Constant.
No.
Motion fails.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Maybe we can find out what the state equalized value is, what it assesses at the property. Maybe.
I think it's a assessment because it's vacant.
All right, guys, let's keep the ball rolling on this, please. Roni at nine. Next up, we have reports from city official, Clerk Sinia, annual liquor license renewal.
Council Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council receive note and file the 2024 Liquor License Review and direct Corporation Council to contact and/or draft a letter to businesses with a deficiency. If the department that cited the deficiency has not already done so, requesting the deficiencies be addressed within 30 days of the date of the letter as outlined in 9A.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Sob. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Yep.
Councilman.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are we looking at all departments, like the building department, looking into the establishment and ordinance?
We're following, I'm sorry. I forgot my microphone. We're following the ordinance in the fire, the police, the water, through the comptroller, the treasurer's office, our office, in ordinance, I believe. They're all being, and they get a checklist at the beginning, I think in January, it's due to us in February, and then we present it to you.
Would a building issue follow their ordinance? Say if there's a structural problem or something?
Under the ordinance. It should be. I mean, the department, the departments are the ones that are responding to it, so I can, I'd be more than happy to send you the ordinance and/or any of the checklists. Because each department is specific to their, you know, each, their checklist is specific to their department.
Okay. So this, what you're presenting is this received note and filed this process, right?
I'm sorry, it's the building, clerk, comptroller, fire, ordinance, enforcement, police, and treasury.
Okay, building department, okay, that's, that was my main. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Council Chair. Anytime. Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye. Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have 9B, Clerk Sinia, notice of public hearing for the 2024-2025 Corporate Fund Budget. Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the public hearing for the proposed 2024-2025 Corporate Fund Budget for Tuesday, May 7, 2024, and that adoption of the budget be scheduled for Tuesday, May 28, 2024, as outlined in 9-B.
Your mic, turn it on. Sorry, Ange. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye. Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have 9C, Treasurer Hicks Clayton, annual investment report.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council receive note and file the year-end investment report and approve the city investment policy as outlined in 9-7.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? I'm going to give you two minutes.
I was waiting for questions.
Well, this is just a file, no, I think I read it most, I don't know, some of the council members did, but I did.
So, yeah, and so this is just a review for the last calendar year.
Yep.
So from January to December of '23, we do, did a great job, actually.
Made some big money.
Earning $1.23 million investment earnings. I do have our consultant with Morgan Stanley on Zoom, if you did have any questions. But this is just formality that you are being updated. You have the report to support that in matching, as well as the investment policy, which is compliant with Public Act 20.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. You do a phenomenal job for being always being.
All right, thank you for bringing Morgan Stanley here. I don't think many people.
Council Chair.
Unless we have.
Council Chair.
Yep, Councilman Wenzel.
Could you give us a comparison to the 22, 23 investment earnings?
So in your report, your attachment, you actually have that graph for, for public information. The years of '21 and '22, the interest rates were very low, so we didn't earn a lot of money. It was a very challenging time, as you can tell. And then when you look at the '23 year, you see the uptick because we've been doing fairly well, well over 5% on our investments. So Eric, did you have anything, do you have, Eric, do you see where he is? If you would raise your hand, Eric, and if you want to add to that. Eric Berger.
Madam Treasurer, are we following the same guidelines we typically follow for investments?
Yes, we have to.
Are we going to go outside the box or anything this year?
Nope, we cannot do that. Municipal treasurers have to follow Public Act 20, and our investment policy is based on that.
Eric Berger's.
Yes, so.
Yep.
So the answer, we follow very strict guidelines of what we can invest with.
Thank you. Go ahead, Eric.
Eric.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, as Lisa mentioned, as interest rates have gone up since March 17th of 2022, 11 times, from nearly 0% to north of 5 and 1/4 to 5 and 1/2%. So have the types of investments that we're allowed to invest in. With that, we're restricted to, as Lisa mentioned, Public Act 20 type investments, which would be US government bonds, commercial paper rated of the top two highest qualities of, by S&amp;P Moody's and Fitch, which are the guidelines we stick to, ultimately 30, 60, 90, even 120-day commercial paper. And so as rates have gone up from 2022 to 2023, we're able to get north of that 5 and 1/2 to 5 and 1/4% on these investments, keeping it to US bigger type of companies, and diversifying amongst the companies as well. So we're off to another strong year in 2024, up another $437,000, $438,000 this year. And if you look at the overall bond market, US corporate fixed income, it's down 2%. And we compare our performance against 90-day T-bills, treasury bills, and six-month treasury bills. So we're up 1.54, T-bills up 1.5, and six-month treasuries up 1.5. And last year, we beat those as well by five and six basis points.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you, Eric, for coming out here. Thank you for all the great work both you and the treasurer do. Hearing no other discussion.
Thank you for the time.
Hearing no other discussion. This is just a received note and filed, do we got to make a vote? All in favor, please state aye.
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 Those, let's do better than that. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have a note for city council. For the following two agenda items, only one of these funding options can be chosen. It is City Engineer Deeb's recommend, recommendation that only option two, item 9E, be approved, though it is ultimately the council's decision to make. So why don't you go through both of them, and we'll follow the expertise of our engineer.
Well, good evening, council. I'd like to provide some background information regarding the funding options before you tonight and the reasons behind each option. As I, as I explained to you before, some of the challenges facing our city have been decades in the making. Lack of capital project planning, end-of-life planned replacement procedures have resulted in major capital outlays that are simply unattainable, given our tax base. When I joined the city about three years ago, I quickly discovered that our operating budget was designed to address day-to-day expenses only, staff salaries, utilities, some replacement costs, et cetera. But no provisions were ever made for capital work, so there's no planned replacement schedules, no preventative maintenance protocols in place, and no capital improvements were ever developed, planned, capital improvement plan. So our city relied mostly on department directors to prepare individual budgets for various department needs. So as a result, major, major capital, major citywide capital projects were simply not included. So things like bridges, bridges went unmaintained. Pavement did not have a scheduled, maintenance schedule protocol. And while some full replacement have indeed taken place, the majority of the water and sewer lines were addressed on emergency basis when failures took place. Furthermore, since capital improvement plan is a derivative of the community's master plan, our city's master plan was last updated on May 8th of 2007. So the resulting five-year capital plan from that date is way outdated, and it doesn't resemble what we have today. Moreover, the only construction capital improvement funding plan the city ever adopted was the sale of 2021 Capital Improvement Bond, quote, limited tax general obligation bond. I hope I did that right, right? Okay. So for the $23,000, $665,000, and the sale took place on April 28, 2021, the bonds were intended to fund three mandated sewer separation projects, plus the replacement of the city's aging water meters. So as I explained before, two out of the three CSOs have now been separated, and the third is fully designed and should be out to bid and, and ready for completion by the mandated date of November 2025. So the above approach, while provided some capital need, some capital needed for these projects, so that funding provided some of the capital needed, resulted scheduled payments to retire these bonds being incorporated into our water and sewer rates schedule resulted in our, in our rates being one among the highest in the region. So on the pavement side, our current operating budget rely on Act 51, which is the gas and weight taxes. As, and it is as follows, and you probably can follow with, with the budget, since we're in the middle of the budget now. Current year, a major road budget is $4,683,000, which is line item 202, 202, 925.100, if anyone wants to verify it. Current year, local road budget is $2,882,500, which is line item 202, 203, 925.100. So the city has 30.06 miles of major road. So our budget comes out to be $155,788.42 per mile per year. On the local side, the city has 153.7 miles of pavement. So your budget currently comes out to be $18,754.06 per mile per year. So for, so for the records, the last pavement projects that we bid just last fall had a low bid, charging us $2.6 million per pavement, per mile, replacement. So at the current rate, it will take us 138.6 years to update our pavement, using this funding approach. If we continue with this funding approach, that's how long it's going to take us. So it became quickly apparent to me that the current approach to funding our infrastructure, which is water, sewer, pavement, public bridges, et cetera, is neither workable nor sustainable. The bridges have deteriorated, and some of, some of them were simply removed from service for the lack of funding. 18 we started with, we're down to 14 now. So water mains are exhibiting much higher than average water main breaks, so, which is plain hell on our operating budget. Given, given these conditions, our administration decided early on to pursue different approach to funding these capital projects. So to address our needs and to minimize the cost to our taxpayers. So in the spring of 2023, the city decided to hire a professional grant manager, and the grant scout was asked to identify any and all possible funding sources to alleviate some of our capital cost. Our staff worked diligently with this funding scout and provided all the needed backup information. On May 23rd, 2023, this honorable council unanimously approved the resolution authorizing us to seek Eagle State funding under the State of Michigan Revolving Fund. Now, this program is a combination of grant and low-interest loan designed to assist the communities in funding their critical, critical projects. The following projects were identified by our staff and submitted to the state. Number one was the water meter replacement, number two was the service line replacement, lead service line, and three was the water main replacement. The staff's, so the state's SRF funding is a highly competitive program, which, which once approved, they provide the communities with 50% loan forgiveness at the closing, plus an attractive low-interest rate of the remainder of the project cost. Currently, for our city, because we're, we're in a category of the city. So anyway, over, yeah, overburdened city. Our rate is currently 2% for 20 to 40-year payback. So, and the payback of 20 to 40 years, the cost of our taxpayer on this program is presented to you in handout number two, option two. Based on the previously approved council resolution, the staff and consultant pursued and were approved for the funding as shown in the attachment. So we have Eagle approval to pursue that option. The city, of course, has the option of rejecting this fund and provide its own financing, like we did in '21. We can always go buy and, and sell more bonds and provide that option. So that option is also presented as option number one. Please note that in addition to these grants, our staff is also seeking grant funding for other city projects like fire station replacement, which, by the way, we have the design dollars now we need, but we're working on the construction. And we also have the Ukor's Creek Army Corps of Engineers detention, which we also have the design and we're proceeding with. And now we're looking for construction. Finally, our staff and consultants have done considerable amount of work to obtain these attractive and highly, highly competitive grants, and based on your directions last year. So we are now facing the critical milestone to submit this and close that loan. Otherwise, 27, I was just told today at 2 o'clock, that 27 other communities that were denied will be in line for that funding if we, if we don't obtain it.
Mr. Deeb, I'm sorry, I just have a couple of questions. You know, you went through this.
I'm done.
Okay.
Yes.
I see here loans, new municipal bond, 20-year, 4.25, $20,437,900.
Sir.
So are we, so we would be taking another bond, you're saying?
If we, if we don't accept it, so that, so you have two options. The same project cost is the same. We have $40 million. We can either go with the state, take, take 20%, 20 million grant and, and bond for the remainder at low interest, or we can sell our own and pay 4 and 1/2%.
Council Chair. One more, yeah, I definitely do not want to go that route. I know you gave us this loan, okay. Grant principal forgiveness, 7 million from the bonds that we've already taken, 2.3 will be from ARPA funds, annual debt services. Now let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Do we have to pay anything back?
Of course.
Okay. Where is the money coming from? Is it going, I want to ask them, I want to finish my question, please.
Sure.
Is this money going towards the water bill? And because I know right now, yes, will we, will these, to be able to pay these back, will it be tacked onto the water bill like we've done for our bonds?
So I have my bond counsel, PFM, so I'm not a bond person, but I know, I know there are two different kinds of bonds. You have either general obligation bonds or revenue bonds. So depending on what bond you sell, if it is revenue bond, that's revenue pays back. If it is general obligation, unless I'm mistaken, you're the expert. Pat?
Yes, so my name is Pat McGow. I'm a bond lawyer. I've worked with the city on past financing projects. So there are actually two different programs through the state. There's one for the sewer CSO project, there's one for the water. For the sewer project, what is going to be done for the loan portion is going to be a revenue bond to cover that part of the loan, which would be paid back from rates and charges. For the water project, that is being done as a capital improvement bond, which could be paid back from either tax revenues or water rates and charges. But essentially, the city has this program with the state where the state offers in some cases a grant, in some cases principal forgiveness, and then the remaining part is a loan. And that has to be paid back through city funds for those projects.
Now, I want to tell you, what was your name you said?
My name is Pat McGow.
Pat McGow, do you live in Dearborn Heights?
I do not.
Okay. I want you to know the one thing about Dearborn Heights, we have the highest water rates in the country. We have the highest water rates in the country. I think everybody here can attest to that. Mayor, can you agree?
I agree.
Thank you. The one thing me and the mayor agree on, water rates.
That's right. Only thing.
Water rates. What's that? Only thing, yeah, I mean, he don't like me, I like him, I swear. I like the guy, he don't like me.
I don't know where you're coming from that one.
But really, water rates. So I know how eager Mr. Deeb is on this. I know how eager Waitrim is. And I know how important this is to even former council members. However, I can tell you this, every single one of us gets a phone call at the beginning of the water cycle talking about water rates. You know what else we get? Anytime that 5% increase comes in from taxes, every single one of us, including the mayor, receives those phone calls. I can tell you, it's a hard burden on me to say, yes, if the water rates are going to continue to shoot up because they're ready up. And it's not going to go up five, six, seven dollars like that was said to me in 2021 or 2020. It was a lie, I was, it was a complete lie. Because now they were actually getting a breakthrough of the water bill, we're seeing the bond being paid through the actual water bill. And when residents come, I see, which I know Mr. Deeb agrees with me, and so I use what Mr. Deeb said, I said, I made a mistake by voting on that bond if the state wanted us to do, because this is what Mr. Deeb told me to say, we should have called the state here and told them to pay for it because we can't afford it. And to put this extra burden on water bills, hard pill for me to swallow. Really, really hard pill for me to swallow.
Council Chair.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. So again, you know, Mr. Deeb is mentioning that two proposals we have. One proposal is going to put more burden on residents if we took the first option. So the second option is, it's got, most of the burden is going to be, the taxpayer, actually we're getting money, we're getting grant money to offset the cost. So if we don't take the right option, we have aging infrastructure, as you mentioned, and the canyon has been kicked down the road for many, for years. And one of the things that Mr. Deeb, when he came in, I mean, he told me there's something wrong with, especially the sewer. The sewer, we've been paying hundreds and thousands of dollars in access that he actually discovered that we've been paying. However, we weren't able to retrieve everything we paid. We only had, how many years was it?
Three years of the payback.
We can only get three years paybacks. I think that's about $250,000 we got back, or we're going to get back.
300.
300? So 300, but they won't give it to you up lump sum, they have to divide it or they kind of subtract from your bill. So with that, we have a lot of water loss, so you got to take that under consideration. The water loss is huge in the city of Dearborn Heights. So you buy a million gallons, you have to pay for a million gallons, and you have to divide it among the users. So by that, when you reduce, once you get everything, the water meters and, you know, fix your water mains, then that's going to minimize your water loss. So you're not going to really see a huge jump, you know, once you fix everything that needed to be fixed for the last 20 years.
I agree with you, but I also don't think that fixing the issue, you're going to see a change in water bills either because you're still see a bill there.
No, no, you get, well, you got to get water bill regardless. However, the bill is going to be much better when we fix the water meters and the water main breaks.
If I may, Mayor, so the water rates are a combination of water sewers and the maintenance cost of the system plus all the losses. So if you look at the projects that we're trying to do, we're attacking it by replacing the meters, by replacing the water mains to minimize the water, water main breaks, which is the expensive option. All of these costs hit your rate. It is not a single like you're buying water and selling it. All these rates are baked into your rate, into your cost. So all the stuff that we're trying to address, the water main breaks, that's a huge one. I mean, we are what, the highest anywhere in the region on the number of water main breaks in the winter. That is an expensive, a large expensive item. And the reason for that is because you have an aging system that hasn't been updated and replaced. By replacing that, you're theoretically, as you take, and what we did is we identified under this plan, plus the ARPA money, is all being allocated to address the cost of water to our citizens. So when you look in the ARPA, when I bring that ARPA funding for you, it is going to be targeting, we tracked all the water main on a map. We know exactly where location wise, the worst areas. We're tracking all this and addressing and using our ARPA to replace that with new meter, with new water mains. So theoretically, you're attacking all the things that caused the water rate to be that high. That's what we're trying to do.
Council Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Deeb, so why can't we use more of the ARPA money?
Because it's restricted. You can't use it for that. It's very restricted. You can't use it for water meters. In fact, let me tell you what I told you the last time in the meeting when we did the presentation. Water meters are considered a city cost. You know, they're enterprise fund. So state will say, you're buying water and selling it, that's your cost, that's your meter. So the only reason they accepted this 50% for us now is because we wanted, we mixed the project with the lead line replacement. We argued to the state that, so I'm going to be in the basement. It's the same line, that's where the meter goes, you know, it's the same, it's easier and less expensive to do it that way. But to them, the high priority is the lead line because it is public safety. After Flint, they will pay for this, but, and then they found out we have 600 and some, almost 700 lead lines in the older areas of Dearborn Heights. So those are critical. So what we have before you, I mean, these things are, they must be done. The $40,535,000 is a cost that we're facing. It's just how do we approach it?
Let me ask you a question. Sorry, Councilman Saab, is that okay?
Yeah.
I think the last time we checked, maybe I can hear from the clerk, I mean, from our treasurer, how, what's the surplus that we have in our water? Yeah. Roughly.
Okay, I can give you those account balances. Chase Water is around a little under 2 million. We have 12 million invested with Morgan Stanley. And then Comerica, the checking has, I think, 2 million and this pool account has around a million.
Around 17.
Those are your accounts.
We got around 17 million dollars just in water. What are we doing with that water? What are we doing with them?
Well, we're investing it.
So it's idle money because we don't need it, it gets invested.
We don't need it.
Well, I have all that I just shared with you, that based on expenditures, I don't need that money yet, so I invest it, right? So, and then when I do need the money, I can liquidate the investment and have it available, just like when I check with Director Deeb and say, when do you need road money, right? I make sure it's available so we could pay our bills.
Oh, guess what?
So we have a lot of money in water, yes.
Well, if we got $10 million, that can cover up the low SRF, low interest 20 year.
One comment, the grant will not be given to you if you don't take the loan. That's, that's, that's the rule. So we're trying to play within the rules. I wanted to get the 20 million in grants. I'm trying my best to get the 20 million in grant, whatever way we need to, because we can't afford the 40 million in projects.
You know, you know what it's, you know what it's doing is, we're being put in a position right now where we're saying, which, and it sucks, you know, but this is our job, saying, you want the $20 million to help fix the infrastructure?
Or 40.
Or we're going to, and we're going to have to tackle onto your residence and your water bill. Anytime I get put in these positions where I don't have an answer, I always turn to the mayor, Mayor, what would you do?
I would go with option two, like I said, you know, by.
So tackle higher interest rates or higher water rates?
Council Chair, we are working on everything. I mean, but every day we're trying to get more money, we're trying to get more grants. Right now, everybody knows, okay, I was, I've been in meetings, you know, there was a meeting with 260 mayors.
Nice.
Okay, so there's not, you know, nobody's, even Flint is doing much better than us right now. I was in, I was in DC.
And water rates maybe, yeah.
Well, I was in DC with them, you know, in DC, we were discussing a lot of issues. Even the CWW, we had a meeting at CWW, I was talking about the water main one month. With 18 communities, actually, we exceeded what the, what the water mains for the whole entire year, just one month. So that's where the cost is, is the loss of water through water main breaks. So right now, we, you know, we can still, we are still working on trying to get other funding. I mean, just because, you know, you take out the loan, it doesn't mean we can't pay it. It's a long-term payment process. And, you know, the other thing is like, you know, the 25 million that we took out, you know, we should, what we should have done is we should have cashed out, you know, small increments with the project. And we're paying millions of dollars in interest because it was cashed out all at the same time, the last bond that we took.
Whose fault is that?
I don't know.
Can I add one more thing that you probably?
Hang on, hang on, Mr. Deeb. Whose fault is that?
I have no idea, we can check into it. But this is something, it's costing a lot of money in interest that we paid that we could have minimized. But we can get to that. If you need it, we can find out, Council Chair.
Yeah.
We can have Claire Moran look into it. But one of the things right now is we can have, we're still looking at other grant money. You know, we're still trying to, again, minimize the water loss. That's the big issue that we're having. There's water loss, and again, I didn't want to say this publicly, there's water theft. So we're trying to minimize all of it. You know, we've caught several businesses stealing water. So, yeah, so that's why we need new water meters. That's why we're trying to get this thing done, Council.
Water meters, we've been promised water meters since 2020.
Council Chair, I was in the same, same boat. I wanted to do it, but you know what? Eagles put some band-aids on us and we have to follow the state mandates. Otherwise, if they step in, they're going to make us pay more. So we're trying to minimize cost of the.
Mr. Deeb, hang on before we start. Yeah.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you. I'm going to vote no on anything that raises water rates, if it's good or bad, the right thing to do or not.
Really my mind and my heart.
Mr. Deeb, you mentioned that the water main breaks are, we have them the highest in the region.
Yes.
Have we ever looked into a more efficient way of fixing water main breaks since we have so many of them? Maybe it takes a day to fix one. Maybe we can buy better equipment where we could do two a day or, or maybe lower the water pressure somehow.
So how, how much work can you do on a 100-year-old pipe when it's breaking every 10 feet? So you get to a point, you have to replace it.
Well, I know that, I mean, but you know, when we replace, do we have the exact, the 100% proper backhoe to dig up for water main breaks?
Nothing to do with the age of the pipe.
The time it takes. I know that, but we have so many of them, it costs us money to repair them. That's the big thing, right?
You're breaking 10 feet away from the first repair and 20 feet away, we, we, we put them all on the map, it became apparent that we're fixing, we're fixing the same location. These things are old.
What's I mean?
They're, they're beyond their useful life.
My question is, is there, if we're fixing them every 10 feet, you know, is there a more efficient way to fix them? I mean, is there like a bigger bucket to dig faster or is there?
No, wait, wait, you don't fix them every 10 feet at the same time.
I know that.
They're breaking, a year from now, you come back and dig the same area.
I understand that.
And not six months, you break, it is, they're beyond their useful life.
I understand that 100%, but since we're fixing them, so say, say we fixed 10 a week, just say.
Okay.
Is there a more efficient way to, to fix so, I mean, if it takes us all day to do one, is there a more efficient way so we can fix two a day, one in south end, one in the north end?
So you want to put, you want to, you just put band-aids on the same pipe?
No, no, I mean, fix them, but do faster.
There is no, the only way to repair them.
I mean, you couldn't go in there with a 10-foot wide bucket, dig it all once. I'm just saying, is there anything?
Councilman.
I'm just saying, is there a different, a more efficient way?
I know, I know your question that you're asking and it's, I understand it.
Yeah.
I understand.
I think, Council Chair, I think Councilman Winstall is talking about like water, pipe, water pipe bursting, right?
Yeah.
This is something that, I know something that was brought to us when I was on council back in 18 that was never even looked at. So this is something that we're, we're exploring. I think, I don't know where the status with that one, Mr. Deeb, because that's, that's going to really help us out with.
So Mayor, what we, what we're doing, so take a look at capital projects. So when we're doing pavement replacement and we run into a section of the pipe that is old, if you remember, I brought a change order last year on Beach Daily when we had to dig up the Beach Daily and to chase the sewer, the sewer line. While I was in that same area, I looked at the age, the age of the existing line and we replaced it at the same time, even though, because I was already there, I already dug up the area. I mean, it was just a simple replace the pipe at this point. So we take advantage of trying to double up, but the bottom line is you have an aged, really old system. It is beyond its service life, it will continue to break and you'll have to react to it. I want to make one more thing for Council Chair. I don't know if you noticed on the bottom of each option, I put the annual debt service for that option and then the cost of the debt service overall. So for option one, which is spend the 40 million, the annual debt service is 2.2, 2261790 at 4.25 rate. If you take the funding from the state and you only bond at 20 years, not the 40, at 20 years, your annual debt service is 617,258. So it is, you know, it's, I'm hoping that with new water meters, captured losses, and then reduce water main breaks, I can make up that number. And if I go 40 years with the state, that 617 will be lost. So our annual debt service under that option is, is not large. It's a hell of a lot, that's on the water main breaks that we do.
Let me ask you one quick question. Is there any prepayment penalties? Say we took on the loan, we received, we received the grant and then we used our water money to pay it off right away?
You can't do that the way you just described it. So the state, when you take out the loan, it has a, you know, 20, 30, or 40-year repayment. You can only pay it back if the state allows it. There's no penalty, but they don't have to take the money. And the reason for that is that the state goes out and does its own financing to fund these loans, so they don't want it to mess up the cash flow on their financings. But if I may just take a minute, just to kind of explain this grant program, because the city has used this grant program in the past, from, you know, the mid 90s until about 2005, a lot of the sewer improvements that were done here through the county and otherwise were done through the state program. And one of the things about this program, the state revolving fund, is it was a low interest loan program, 2%, 2.5%. What's different this year is that between the federal ARPA money that the state got, the bipartisan infrastructure law, the state has a lot more grant funds this year. And so every community in the state applied for this funding. There were 163 applicants for water, 180 for sewer. Only about 25% of the cities actually got funding and an even smaller percentage got grant funding. So what's different this year, even though the state runs this program every year for the low interest loan, is they have all this federal ARPA money and the BIL money that they're offering in grants. And you're right, you have high water rates. That put you higher on the point list. You were the number four project out of 168 on the sewer list. And that allowed you to get 50% principal forgiveness, which acts like a grant. But in order to get that, you have to do a, issue a bond or a document that's called a bond, it's really a loan, in the full amount of the project, you draw it down and you only pay back half. That's what they call principal forgiveness. So the number at the beginning is the whole project, but you only have to pay back half. On the water side, they gave you not just principal forgiveness, but they also gave some of that federal grant funds towards it. But the only way you get those monies is if you go through the loan program. And the thing about the program this year is there's a much greater percentage of these grant and principal forgiveness funds that most people don't expect to be there next year because, like you, the state has to pay off and spend this ARPA money that's already been committed. So you applied for these programs back last May. The state came out with a preliminary list in October. I think it was December, Mr. Deeb reported back that you actually received more grant funds. And so the state has a very rigid timetable because there's 60 other communities in these programs. And they have a milestone schedule, you've got to have, you know, designed by the state, these applications. So, you know, you're still on track to do it, but a lot of these deadlines are coming up. And if you miss the deadlines, then you wouldn't receive the funding that year. Somebody else, another community would get whatever you don't use and you'd be in the position of having to reapply next year or find the funding somewhere else. So we are getting to the point where the city council would need to take actions for some of these projects if you're going to proceed and get the grant funds. And just to be clear, you know, you don't get the grant fund without also doing the loan portion through it. And a question that I think has been asked, one thing that was done, that was very cleverly done by your team, was by combining the water meters and mains with lead service lines, that gave you more points. I think at one time you guys asked, do we need to do all these projects? And if what you want to do is to only do the water meters, you're going to be lower on the scale and you won't have the points. What the state gave you points for was the lead service lines. That's where they're giving a lot more grant funds. So you can't just do the loan for the water meters, you have to do it for the lead service lines as well because that's what got you to the top of the point list.
Council Chair.
Mr. Deeb, I have a question. Since you mentioned the annual debt service, so it's going to cost us 617,000. So this is just off the 10 million that we're taking for the 2% interest or are we paying on the grant too?
No, no, this is, this is just the loan portion. The grant, so when you go to closing, the fifty percent forgiveness will take place.
Right away or?
What?
Will take, take place right away or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So it's, it's called forgiveness, loan forgiveness. So your payment is for the loan portion.
Which is ten million?
Yes.
So if it's ten million at two percent for twenty years, I mean, if it's annual debt service six seventeen, why? Is it costing us twelve million or this is altogether with the ten million?
No, the total cost at the end of the loan, just like when you amortize a house. I'm sure, you know, your payment at the end of the, the loan, that's what the number will be.
So basically we're paying interest about?
Your ten will become twelve million at the end of the loan.
Correct. So we're paying about, it's gonna cost us about two point three million in interest over twenty years, correct? So why are we paying six seventeen a year? If we're paying six seventeen a year times twenty years, that's.
Six, so six seventeen is the debt service per year. That's how much we pay per year. The last number is the total at the end of the, the years. So we can reduce that number if we select forty-year loan. As, as you heard.
So you're talking, that six seventeen is the payment plus the interest?
Yes, yes, yes.
No, that's the payment including the interest. So six seventeen is the principal.
Principal and interest.
You borrow ten million, you pay back twelve million over twenty years. So you're only paying two million in interest over that twenty-year period.
So I know beginning, like back in January, we were hoping for a hundred percent grant for the stuff. And now like two weeks or maybe two meetings ago, we were surprised with not.
As I said before, the, the reason they were giving us a thirty million was for, because we didn't apply. When we applied for, when they found out, the state found out, you have six hundred and fifty approximately of, of, of lead service lines. We became sort of, no, no, we spend that, this is, uh, uh, public safety. Meters are enterprise, that's yours. So we lost that option. They said we, we convinced them by combining the two and that was pretty tricky to try to convince them that. Then, then they agreed, if you make them one project, then we will give you the, the money. But other, other than that, you, it was, it was a choice between, you know, water meters or public safety.
So what's the option now? If you don't go with those option one or option two, we have to wait till next year and apply again?
Which you'll never see that again.
You're not gonna see that again? So my second question is, remember when you, when you presented to us last time and you said, that was Tuesday, and you said we have to answer by Friday?
So actually, we, we, no, what we did is, I'm, I'm doing the paperwork, I'm still doing all the paperwork. We did answer, I didn't say that we have a commitment. I need your commitment by showing there is a form that has to be filled that has a city council approval of the grant. And I haven't, I haven't submitted that. So we are late and by, I think is it twenty-seven, twenty-fourth or twenty-seven?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, oh, I missed that.
So you're telling me now, having wait trim and a grant division, we're not gonna be able to get any more grants?
You will kiss that money goodbye, I can tell you, because she told me today, there are fifty-nine other communities that were not approved. You guys don't take advantage of it, it goes away. You will have only one option and that will be to sell bonds and, or don't do it.
Do you want to say something, sir?
I was just stepping in. All, any application requirements i- in terms of dates have been met and kept you in line with the schedule of milestones dictated by Eagle. For both the C W S R F and the D W S.
What about seeking more options and maybe try, hopefully we can get more grants? Any miracle out there?
This, the, the option provided to you with the twenty billion dollars available is absolutely the best, the mo- the highest amount that you guys will ever have the opportunity to get, within reason. It's, it's a unique opportunity, it's, it's before you. With the ARPA funds, like, like Patrick had mentioned, the ARPA funds that are part of the S R F veil this year, they go away next year. So that's, that's ten million dollars that's allocated in this package towards that, that goes away. That, that opportunity goes away, so.
I'm sorry, ten million from ARPA? No, it's two point three, two point three eight four.
No, no, this is state ARPA.
State ARPA.
State ARPA.
Yeah, state ARPA.
Council chair. Thank you. Guys, I got one more, we're gonna wrap this up. Okay, I just, you know, a big issue was made about the loan forgiveness portion. Is that a hundred percent guaranteed?
Yes, yes is the answer.
It's a hundred percent guaranteed, okay, thank you.
Okay, hearing no other discussions, we're gonna take this to a vote? We have two options. I think two is the option that the administration is asking us to take. So you want me to vote on both of them?
Option one.
Okay, so we're gonna go, who wants to read? So first we have nine D, City Engineer Deeb, Capital Improvement Project Funding, option one.
Council chair.
Councilman Constant.
Go ahead, Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved Capital Improvement Project Funding, option number one is outlined in ninety.
Support for discussion, or we already did? All right, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad, take a double. Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye. Those opposed?
No.
Who read it around?
No, we gotta read both. We have to read both, sorry.
All in favor, please stay at eye. Those opposed?
No.
No.
Now, clerk, just take a roll call. Please.
Hassan Ahmad?
No.
Moby Dun?
No.
Tom Winstall?
No.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
No.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Robert Constant?
No.
Nancy Breyer?
No.
Next up, we have nine E, City Engineer Deeb, Capital Improvement Project Funding, option two.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved Capital Improvement Project Funding, option number two is outlined in ninety.
Second. Support. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Hearing no discussion, since we already done. All in favor, please stay at eye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Tom Winstall?
No.
Moby Dun?
No.
Robert Constant?
Yes.
Motion carries five-two.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have nine F, Corporation Council for Horizon Wireless, Cherry Hill on the Wheels, C O W Agreement.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the cell on wheels or cow temporarily agree, temporary agreement between the city and cell co-partnership D B A as Verizon Wireless further pending Corporation Council's revisions of the agreement authorized by the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in nine F.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have nine G, D P W Director Conrad, Disposal of Used Equipment. Council chair. Councilman Constant.
Okay, I'll do it. I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approves the disposal of the following vehicles, which will be sold through the auction process. A nineteen ninety Ford F three fifty service truck, number eight. Nineteen ninety-eight Sterling LT Dump Truck, number fourteen. Nineteen ninety-nine Sterling LT Dump Truck, number nineteen. Two thousand and one Ford F seven fifty tree truck, number twenty-five. Twenty-twelve Freightliner Sweeper Truck, number thirty-one, and a New Holland backhoe, as outlined in nine G.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Saab. Uh, any discussion? I will have just a couple of things, Mr. Conrad. I remember when I first got on council, I believe his, our, our former D P W director was, may I remind me?
Salmy.
Salmy, yeah. And my buddy was work, he works for Amdot and he was in, he was somewhere far in Detroit. And there was this big truck that had a big Dearborn Heights logo. I actually saw the video, it's the funniest vehicle in the world. Um, and this guy was driving this Dearborn Heights tractor in the city of Detroit. And then when I called Salmy and I sent him the video, which I thought was crazy that somebody had one of our trucks there, we actually sold it. And we left the emblems on there. So when I went to the auction and, and the company that bought it in Detroit from the auction still had this Dearborn Heights city emblem. Here's this guy driving this tractor with a Dearborn Heights emblem. So my, my thing is before we transfer or sell any of these things, please make sure that there's no more city emblems on any, any of the information.
You approve this, I will assure that the emblems are removed.
Okay.
Council chair.
Council chair.
Okay, next we have Councilman Saab, Councilman Ahmad and Councilman Winstall. We're gonna be quick on this, guys.
Mr. Conrad, what company are you using for the auction?
Um, Ranger Bid.
Ranger Bid? Have we used them before?
Yes. I, I, it's who a lot of the municipalities use to sell.
We've used them.
Auction equipment.
Okay, thank you so much.
I had the same question, but do we need to go for bids again to use this bid company or?
It's zero cost to the, um, city to sell. We get full value. Um, whatever the bidder bids on the equipment we're disposing, we get the full value of it. Um, and then there's a buyer's premium, you know, just like any other auto auction, that the buyer has to pay to, you know.
I understand, we still need to go for a bidding company, because if there's a buyer premium, so it can differ from one bidding company to the other. And that can reflect on how much money we're getting.
Um.
Maybe corp counsel, are we?
Following the procedures we've been using before. This bid company takes a number of different companies and combines it.
No, 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 I'm saying, are we gonna go for a bid to pick a bidding company for this, like an auction company?
I think they've, they've used this company, it went through the process already, is that correct, Mr. Conrad?
I, I mean, I'm using the same company we've used, you know, for the past few biddings. So, um, and it's the one that most of the municipalities around here use. If, you know, I mean, we've been, hey, this stuff has been in the yard ever since I took the job, you know, two and a half years ago. I mean, I wanna clean up the yard, you know, we're, we're making efforts to clean up, become more efficient. I wanna get rid of some of this equipment that's just taking up space, um, you know, get it off of our, uh, any, our, our insurance, you know?
Liability.
Liabilities, um, you know, so I mean, yeah, we can, you know, shop around for another, you know, um, but it'll delay the process, but. That's, that's your call. I mean, we've used Bitter G, I mean.
No, I understand where you're coming from and I really appreciate whatever you're doing, but what we're trying to implement here, just a process. Like we have to be fair across the board. So if you don't mind, I would suggest like, let's send it out for bids and see whoever we're gonna use, but it's up to you guys. Can we use any of this equipment for the golf course?
No, I mean, most of this stuff won't even run.
The museum, maybe.
I mean, they, they got blown motors, they, bad transmissions, bad brakes. I mean, they, they, the, the boom truck is, is so old that it can't even be certified anymore. Um, is that the tree truck?
Is that the rusted one?
The booms have a lifespan, a lifespan of twenty years. It's exceeded its lifespan, so it can't even be certified to be used anymore as a boom truck. Um, you know, I mean, to be honest, most of this stuff is probably gonna be scrap value.
Council chair. Whatever you wanna do, Councilman.
So I'm, I'm fine with either, whatever you guys want. Are there other companies other than this, the one we're using? Are there many?
The only other one I'm aware of is the one the police department uses, which is, I think Ranger Bid.
That's what you just said.
Um, no, um, Bitter G. Is that, I, I think Bitter G might be the one that the police department's used for, you know, some of their, uh, I guess.
With this company, there's no cost to the city.
Right, it's no cost to the city, um, you know, buyer premium pays, you know, for the actual auction of the equipment.
For the buyer premium, the guy that buys it is paying the premium.
Correct. Zero cost.
It makes a difference from one, I mean, if you're paying five percent or paying ten percent, I mean, it's gonna affect our money that's coming to us.
I would say, can we put a, can we put a?
You're not.
I know, but if you're paying more for the auction, instead of paying you, like for example, ten thousand, I'm gonna have to pay five percent, now I'm paying ten percent. You're probably gonna bid eight thousand.
You're right.
I would say, let's put a, for bidding for one week, if you don't mind, and we'll take it from there. All right. Thank you very much. Can we still approve this with, with going out for bid? I mean, so we can approve, well, okay, never mind.
Council chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. The question about is, is this stuff was utilized now, it's none of these are being used, right?
No.
Um, I know, I, my question about the, the water main breaks is if we had the right equipment to be doing water. I think we should meet with the, the director here and, and see, you know, does, does this money return back to his department or is it going to the general fund? I mean, it should go back to his department, because it was allocated originally for that. And see what kind of equipment you need. I know I talked to a lot of guys cutting down trees and stuff, they said they need a, a tree grabbing thing, you know? Yeah, I mean, they do. Let me tell you, your, your water crew is one of the best water crews I've ever seen. I mean, you know, you, you don't become, I mean, you become the best crew and the most efficient crew by doing a hundred and eighty-eight breaks a year. I mean, though, they are phenomenal. I mean, they'll do three breaks a day. Well, I mean, that's what I'm saying, is there, do, do they have? I mean, they have, they have the best, they have the best vector. Okay, they got the best equipment. That was my question, Ali Deeb, is, you know, do, do they have the best equipment available, state yard equipment? They have the best equipment, I mean. He didn't understand my question. Yeah, it's, I mean, they, they are phenomenal. I'm just amazed at what they can do.
I watched them, you know. I mean. Thank you, thank you. Any other discussion? So are we going to amend this motion? I mean, whatever it is, it's, uh, Councilwoman Breyer's decision to amend the motion.
Council chair, I was wondering about the money, where did this money go?
Yeah, it's a good question.
Does, does, does it go, where does that money go? I guess it would go back to the ti- I mean, the titles, if the titles are for water, which a lot of this stuff was water equipment. Um, the sweeper, I guess I don't know who bought the sweeper, whether it was bought with road funds or water funds. Um, I mean, I would think that's your prerogative as well, is, you know, to put the money back where it was purchased from. I mean, it is coming out of D P W. Um, it, you know, I'd, I'd appreciate if it stayed into D P W, but I mean, that's.
Well, if, if, we, we can figure this out, if it's sold, we can put a motion to say that it all go back to D P W.
Any department, like library or any department that has a sale.
Sure. Uh, so what are we doing here, guys? So I would say we can amend it to just say, uh, auction company to be picked through our bidding process. So you wanna just keep it, vote yes with it, to go out for bid? Look, I'm gonna give you my personal opinion on this. I, I think it's, these things, guys, nothing from the audience, please. I think this is something that they're old, we've used them in the past. I actually remember seeing a Ranger Bid on, on there a couple of times. I do agree with Councilman Ahmad though, look, there needs to be a check and balance. We can't tell I T director every time he brings something up here and he doesn't go out for bid and say here, you know, we're gonna let you slide. Uh, then, you know, we go back to the mayor and, and we say, like, the purpose of this is to really protect you guys, the residents, and to be transparent. All we're asking, you know, and sometimes, you know, it, it's easier to just go out there and say, hell, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna go out for bid, we've been using them, same company, who cares if we're making more money or not? Let's just get these things out of our yard and let's keep it moving. Um, and I'm not saying that's, you know, necessarily how you feel, but it seems like what's, you know, it's what's happening. Um, I think today, I'm okay with going with, with this and just moving forward, if the councilman's okay with it, ultimately it's a decision we're all gonna make. Um, but all, you know, Councilman Winstall is very adamant, Councilman Ahmad is very adamant, I think this entire body is very adamant. Uh, but them two specifically, because they continue to bring it up, you gotta go out for bid, you gotta get three bids, there's no ends of what's about it. Uh, so I'm gonna let this body make their decision. I, I know that we've used Ranger Bid before though. When I went through my packet, I recall using, and I don't mean six months ago, I mean a couple of years ago as well. So this is something we've used, you know, just recently. I mean, if we have a, council chair, if you don't mind, I mean, if we had a, do we have a contract with them right now? Is it still?
No.
I don't know.
I would say, Councilman, would you mind amending it just to go out for bid for an auction company?
It would be Councilwoman Breyer.
I second it.
Would you, would you mind or?
I, I really think we should do it now.
Without amending it?
We can get a commitment from the director that, uh, he'll check into other companies.
Well, why don't we just go and take this to a vote? All right, uh, all in favor, please stay at eye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. All right, but I want you guys to keep in mind that this is something that we expect. We expect you to go out for bid, so please move me forward. If you're spending anything over fifteen hundred dollars, we gotta go out for bid, especially if it comes to services.
Council chair, I mean, what, what could they be bidding on?
Well, there could be multiple different bid companies that can.
I know, and the, the company, what, I mean, you're, you're, you're just using the company, I mean, what would they actually be bidding on?
The fees they charge.
What's the percentage that you? Might, might charge the buyer five percent.
Okay.
One auction might charge the buyer eight percent.
There you go, yeah, yeah.
Whoever charges eight percent is coming.
I think we should look, yeah, we should definitely.
All right, guys, next up we have nine H, I T Director Cooper, purchase and payment of testing, training laptops for human resources and civil services.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase and payment of fifteen, I don't know, ThinkPad E sixteen laptops from S H I for use as testing and training devices for human resources department, a total of twelve thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and ten cents. As already approved by the Civil Service Commission, account number one oh one dash two two zero dash eight one seven zero 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 will be used for three thousand dollars in their respective budget and account number one oh one two five eight nine eight one zero 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 will be used for the remaining nine thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and ten cents as outlined in nine H.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. All right. Mr. Cooper? I think this is something that we need. This is gonna be a great resource to the city of Dearborn Heights. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, Mr. Cooper's so happy he's not having to hear nothing. You notice how I kinda, you see how I paid that for you? I give you a good handoff.
You got me a little worried.
Yeah, yeah, hey, well, you see, you see what we did there? We handed it off to you, you had three different bids, you, you did it right. No one should be saying nothing to you, you went out for three bids. We need Mr. Mr., we need Mr. Conrad to take notes on that one. Council chair, really, I wanna thank Director Conrad for actually providing photos of all the equipments that we're selling, so it's in the backup. Yep, yep, that's why I told him, make sure the emblems gotta come up, and he gave me his word. You gonna send us updated photos showing them they're removed? I'm joking, go ahead. The mayor's gonna say you don't believe him? Yes, I believe him. All right, next up we have nine I, Parks and Recreation Director Sour, um, Waddle Park Replacement Parts and Installation.
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase of replacement parts for the Waddle play structure for, from game time as the sole provider in the amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-four cents to be taken out of the recreation, account number six nine one dash nine eight one as outlined in nine dash I.
Motion, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by? Uh, second. Councilman Winstall.
The amount, um, the amount is different now. It's twenty thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and forty- and sixteen dollars and forty cents.
Twenty thousand?
Twenty thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and forty cents. They happen to be a member of my deal, so that made us a, a discount of twenty-six hundred.
That's amazing. Did you get that from the clerks?
Hmm.
So, twenty thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and forty cents, do you amend your motion?
Yes.
You seconded amendment, Councilman Wensel?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Counsel Chair.
Councilman Wensel.
It's, uh, it's Weddell Park is the way you pronounce it.
I beg, guys, just like things Swapka Park and, Swapka Park.
Yep, okay. Um, you know, I've talked about this park a lot, you know, in the last couple of years, and it's, it's, it's terrible conditions. As a matter of fact, right now, it's fenced off. You can't even go play on it right now. Um, and I'm not sure about what equipment, and there's a sole, the sole provider, what's, what's that mean?
Basically, well, in this situation, game time is the, uh, people who, um, have the, the manufacturer for the play structure. So you can only get the parts from them. I did have, um, WeBuild Fund out there, and, um, he said that he cannot do it, and, and another company said they can't do it, because they can't get the game time parts, which is what the structure, um, is, is a game time structure. I believe it was installed probably from ninety to ninety-five, nineteen ninety to nineteen-five, so there are some other pieces that I'll probably be coming to, uh, to replace, individual spring, um, fixtures and things like that. Um, the, uh, replacement cost for that structure is about eighty thousand, and we don't have the funds for that.
Thank you.
Well, Counsel Chair, yeah, I mean, um, it's, it's a neighborhood park, and it does, it's not a small park, it's, takes up a lot, a lot, quite a bit of property.
Which one is this one by?
It's on, it's on Weddell Street between, uh, Annapolis and Lehigh Street.
Yes, 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 yes. It's in the neighborhood, right?
Yeah, it's right in the neighborhood.
Yep, I love it.
And it's, uh, I, I grew up in that area, and it used to be, the Weddell Community Center used to be their building, and, uh, that's where you, as a kid, that's where you went. They tore, they tore the building down, actually, the, the Dad's Club held their meetings there. It's, it's pretty, uh, uh, pretty nice area, but, um, it's, 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 it's just a, a small amount to, to put in, as I know, you, that's all you have in your budget for it, and like, I, I said before, we're spending, you know, a million dollars on, uh, on Van Houten Park, uh, hopefully, we can spend some more, I, I'll, this is just a start for this park.
Well, this is the start for this park, um, but, as I've been hearing through this whole meeting, especially from Mr. Deeb, um, we're still playing catch-up from kicking the can down the road, and I need stuff at every single park and every single facility, and I have to prioritize, uh, based on safety.
Right, this park, I mean, I, I've taken my kids there, and this park is dangerous. I mean, it's rusted, jagged steel.
The, the option was to replace the parts or demo it.
Yeah.
That was the options.
Well, some parts are alright, some parts of the play structure are okay.
They are, and there's still a lot that needs to be done, so.
I think this is a park, now that we, we, we're gonna finish up Van Houten, hopefully, this year, a hundred percent, and we can go and.
Well, actually, this project with Van Houten would not finish off Van Houten, just so you know. Um, there's a lot of things that need to be done at every single park, and I'm not saying that it'll all go into Van Houten now, but the safety issue has been addressed with the play structure at Van Houten, and that was the major part of the cost, so.
Alright, just a start.
It's a start.
And I'm not giving up on it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilor. I appreciate your passion over for it. Weddell Park?
Weddell Park, yes.
Weddell Park.
Even after the street.
Yup. Alright, hearing, uh, no other discussion? Let's take this twelve vote, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, congratulations to Weddell Park. Alright, next up, we have nine J Tax, uh, Increasement Finance Authority, I'm sorry, Increment Finance Authority, TIFA, Chairman Emery, TIFA Audit Report, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Counsel Chair.
Yup.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council receive note and file the Tax Increment Finance Authority, TIFA, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three Audit Report, as outlined in nine J's.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman Sob. Any discussion? I know we had our presentation in the beginning. Thank you to, uh, Tom and the board, and everybody that, uh, took part on this. What's that?
Tim Emery.
And, yup. I said everybody, Tom and everybody on the board.
Right.
Uh, Tim Emery as well, thank you, guys. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have Tax Increment Finance Authority, TIFA, Administrator, uh, Roscoe, TIFA Budget twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the Tax Increment Finance Authority, TIFA, award approval of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five TIFA Budget as outlined in nine K.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have Council Chairman Beduin, Extension of Temporary Food Use and Licenses at Specific Locations Resolution.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council further extend the amended resolution regarding City Council approval process for temporary food uses and licenses at specific locations for an additional one hundred and eighty days, as outlined in, in eleven dash A.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have eleven B, Councilman Wensel, Motion of No Confidence, Human Resource Director.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman, uh, Wensel.
I'd like to make a motion that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the following resolution to a no confidence in Human Resource, uh, Director Haslett.
Counsel Chair.
Yeah, Councilman.
Um, can we move, Council, uh, Mr. Wensel, can we, uh, put this into a study session or table it?
Um, you know, I've, since, uh, since we put this on the agenda, I've, I've, I've talked to a lot of people. I think it might be a good idea, because there are some things I wasn't aware of, and that, I think it might be a good idea to bring out everything that needs to be brought out, and, uh, maybe have the, uh, Director add a study session, so I, I wouldn't oppose that, no.
So you guys wanna have?
Counsel Chair.
Mayor.
Okay, from, ever since I was on council, I'm sure all the seasoned council members here will say the same. Anytime you talk about personnel issue, has to be in a closed session, not a study session.
Sorry.
No, I'm just saying, we have to go, I mean, e- even this resolution, being an open session, it's, it's kinda berating.
The resolution is a no, is no confidence, but I don't think violates the charter.
It, well, no, I'm just saying, it berates, you know, employees, you know, we should, anytime there's a issue with anything personnel, it should go into us, a closed session.
So Mayor, what does somebody do? I'm, 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 I agree with you, but what does somebody do when the council has made several votes for things to be passed and follow direction, and they just don't do it?
Well, if you come and ask.
You're going into it, I think, why don't, why don't we just?
Do a closed session, we, we'll discuss this.
What do you guys wanna do?
Counsel Chair, just, Council, Mr. Wensel, can we amend it to a, a closed session?
I mean, do we have to do a closed session? I mean, do, I mean, I'd rather do an open session, so the residents can.
You can do it with the personnel issues that are gonna come up.
A closed session?
Guys, point of order. Hold on.
Closed session?
Hold on, hang on, Councilman, one second, please, Councilman, one second. Mayor was speaking, go ahead.
What I'm saying, it's up to the councilman who, Councilman Wensel put the motion, if he wants to still proceed with it, he can move it to us, a closed session.
Okay, thank you. Are you done, Mayor?
Yes.
Councilman Wensel.
What do I, do we have to have a closed session? We can't have a, an open session where the residents could be part of, privy to the information revealed?
Counsel Chair.
Hang on one second, Councilman, please.
I mean, I, that's, I don't know, I don't know that answer. I'd, I'd rather have open session, open study session, myself.
So, so suppose she gets fired, okay, and then suppose she says.
I don't think she's gonna get fired.
It, it was slander that somebody said she didn't do A, B, and C. That's why it, it, I think would be better in a closed session. I'm not saying she will, I'm saying that would be a reason why discussing, uh, a personnel matter like this would be better off being done in a closed session.
Well, regardless, I don't think she's getting fired, um, but I, I do know, I do know that she's discussed that.
We're not, we're not having a discussion.
It was a bad example, I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not talking about.
But we're just saying, there are issues that may, are, in a close, study session that may come up, that may take us down that path.
Thank you, please, just Roger, well, let's go to the Council Chair, please. Thank you. We know that, uh, Mrs. Haslett has put in her resignation, so we know she's not getting fired, because she's leaving out of here on June thirtieth. She put it in an email that's easily before you.
She's retired.
Um, so I know that she's, you know, stepping down or retiring, like the Councilwoman stated. I didn't know that. Uh, I wish her the best in her retirement or in her future endeavors, because in reality is, this council has asked for direction, they were never complying. We're not, we're not talking about performance.
You are, but you are Council Chair.
Please, point of order.
Counsel Chair. These are things that are.
Public.
Public, yeah, it's been public, we've stated them dozens of times at meetings.
Other side to it, and there's a discussion on it, and there's, that's what's gonna come out.
I haven't a discussion about any specific.
Counsel Chair.
We're talking about, council has requested, just like a director right now goes out for bid.
I'm just advising you to do this in a closed session, because there are things that are gonna come out. It's not just one-sided, and I believe that how it would be the best.
I don't know what side it is.
You don't know, I'm not finished talking, Counsel.
I mean, you interrupted me as well in the beginning, Roger.
No, you interrupt me all the time.
No, no, point of order. You didn't go to the Council Chair, you just started speaking while I was talking. So please, if you wanna speak, Robert's rules of order, let's go through the proper channel.
Would you like me to speak, or would you like me to wait for you?
Well, I'd like you to wait for me, not to interrupt me.
I won't interrupt you.
So, like I was stating, if I were to speak about our DPW Director today, and say, hey man, you know, we, we did a terrible job at cleaning the roads, which they do a phenomenal job at cleaning the roads, um, I'm not talking, I'm not slandering the person. I'm saying we did a terrible job at cleaning the roads. If I tell the, if I tell, uh, or if the councilman says to our HR Director, you did a terrible job at not putting something online, that's his opinion.
I used a bad example. Now, if I may respond, Counsel Chair, you said, we did a terrible job. You didn't say that individual, and you didn't go into the particular, you said we, you used the word we.
Oh, my God, man.
So when you say we, you mean the generally, the group, the team, but when you go into a specific person, and you get into personnel issues and what they did and did not do, then you personalize it, and then you get into the problems, that's why we have a closed session.
You know, Mayor, I gotta, I'm gonna commend you on something. You did a good job at hiring a great litigator, somebody that doesn't take no or yes. You did a great job at hiring.
He was a prosecutor, and you guys approved it.
Hey.
He's a good city attorney.
You hired, you hired a really good personal attorney, you did a great job with it.
Counsel Chair, why don't we just go ahead and table it now, and we can look in whether it's a closed session or open session?
Yeah, let's move on.
Let's move on.
Okay, can you schedule, look into it and schedule?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't you email special legal counsel? I give you permission to email special legal counsel, how does that sound?
Okay.
There you go. There you go, put it, put it to rest. Uh, so we're gonna table.
Counsel Chair.
We have to, we have to suspend the rules, amend the budget, or just vote on it?
Just vote on tabling it.
First of all, do we have a second on that motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Who's the second? I'm sorry.
Well, no, we didn't even read the motion. He read the beginning, and then we just started talking, so you're right, there wasn't a second. But Councilman Sob says he seconds it.
Okay, so that was as written, right?
Right.
Okay, and that's what you wanna vote on, or you wanna vote?
No.
You wanna amend it now?
Amen.
Okay, perfect.
So Councilman Winston, go ahead and amend it to table it.
Okay, yeah, I'll amend my motion of eleven B to.
Be tabled.
Be tabled, and, uh, I will, I'll contact our corporation, our special legal counsel, and, uh, report back to the, the Council Chair about the proper, the next proper procedures.
See, see my councilman chair, I'm, and the clerks on there as well for me.
Alright, thank you. Um, do you second that, Councilman?
Yes.
Okay, uh, to tables, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Counsel Chair, just for the record, I shouldn't have used that example, but.
Okay. Uh, next up, we have eleven C.
Counsel Chair. I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the resolution for transforming the Great Lakes and Saint Lawrence River Basin into a thriving blue-green economic corridor while, well, bless you, while safeguarding our freshwater resources and authorize the certification of this resolution, as outlined in eleven dash C.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Counsel Chair.
Councilman, uh, Wensel.
Who brought, who, who brought this eleven C up?
Uh, this is from.
The mayor.
The mayor, reports from the mayor.
Okay, now, this is, can you, can you give us, you know, the residents a quick synopsis of what actually this is?
Okay, can I, Counsel Chair?
Yup, Mayor, please.
Okay, so, about two, three weeks ago, I was in Washington DC, and, uh, we were talking to about, uh, I would say eighteen, uh, congressional and, uh, US Senate, and, uh, not just from Michigan, from all over, um, states around the Great Lakes. Some of the stuff that they were talking about, they're trying to get funding, uh, to clean that, to make sure that the Great Lakes, um, stays safe. So there's a lot of issues going on right now, so, you know, we talk, I mean, there's a lot of tactical stuff, I can get into it with you if you wanna give me a call later, but in a nutshell, uh, some of the, one of the biggest dangerous things going on right now with the, that, with the Great Lakes, is they got the Asian carp, it's actually coming through, uh, the rivers, and, uh, right now, they're holding them at bay at, in Illinois, and, uh, they're waiting for the Illinois And right now, they're holding them at bay at, in Illinois and they're waiting for the Illinois governor to basically approve something, a process that can make sure that they don't get into the Great Lakes. Once the Asian carp gets into the Great Lakes, that's gonna destroy all the fish in the Great Lakes and also all the recreation. So you can't do any kind of recreation in any, any of the Great Lakes. And on top of it, uh, they're trying to get any funding that, any, anything that goes into the Great Lakes to make sure that the Great Lakes stays clean. So any, any rivers, uh, like the Ecorse, Ecorse Creek, you know, the Rouge River goes into the Detroit River, the Detroit River goes into the lake. So to make sure that the water going into the Great Lakes is clean. So they're trying to get a lot of funding, you know, a few hundred million dollars funding from the federal government. And one of the other issues that we're having with the Great Lakes is water erosion. So water erosion, a lot of people, um, risk of having their homes lost, uh, to the, going into the lake itself because of water erosion. So they're trying to get funding for erosion also. So, um, I was asked by the, the Saint Lawrence Great Lakes Cities Initiatives and that's gonna be voted on, uh, is again, that's part of the two-hundred-sixty mayors around the Great Lakes that participate with the Saint Lawrence Great Lakes Cities Initiatives. We have a, a meeting in Montreal next month and that's, we gotta be passing that resolution. And they're also, they gotta come up with funding, you know, for the Great Lakes and also we're trying to get funding to clean up the Ecorse Creek and also for the Rouge River. So that's some of the stuff that, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on with the Saint Lawrence Great Lakes Initiative. And I know, Councilman, if you were here with us, when that company came in, it's called Stentec, they came in and they're trying to, uh, you know, they took all the studies for the last sixty years for the Ecorse Creek. They compiled the data and they come up with a solution. That's, that's what they're working on right now. So Stentec actually became aware of the Ecorse Creek because of the meetings that I participate with. Uh, when I bring up all the issues that Dearborn Heights is having, you know, for the last sixty years. And, and that's one of the ones, I'm, I'm a board member for that initiative.
Counselor chair, is, is this, is this gonna cost the city any money or is this just us being nice and, and, and doing something that's good for the environment?
Well, it's both, actually. It's good for the environment and also advocating that we're serious about our water. And that's something, you know, when we do advocate, we want something done, then they can, they take us seriously, that, that we are serious about the cleanliness and everybody has the right to clean water.
Is this costing us anything?
No, it's gonna bring us more money, actually.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have new business, business license renewal.
Counselor chair.
Councilman Conston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the business license renewals for Ford Lanes Inc. at two-three-one-hundred Van Born, Irwin Auto Sales Inc. at two-three-seven-oh-six Van Born, and Denny's Gin Mill at four-nine-oh-one South Telegraph as outlined in thirteen A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Conston, seconded by Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell. Uh, any discussion?
Counselor chair. I know, you know, Ford Lanes and Denny's Gin Mill, I know them really well, the auto sales place. And you know, this is, I'm gonna just make my point again is I'm against any used car lots, used auto sales in the city anymore, giving out any more licenses or license renewal. I don't know if it's, you know, legally, I can, you know, say that, but I, you know, I'm against used car lots, I'll put it that way.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, and I have to agree with Councilman Wenzel on this particular, uh, used car lot. They've got cars packed in if there was ever a fire or anything. Are, are they current on all their taxes and water and all that?
Well, I mean, I, if you check the backup, they're, they're up to date on their water and their taxes.
And that's the only thing that we can check for the ordinance.
Moving forward, do I have to put a resolution to ask about ordinance as well?
You would have to direct corporation council to change that ordinance, that's correct.
Council chair?
Yeah, I know, I, I know.
Yeah, and you know, and this is like, uh, we, we need to find out from ordinance if there, if there are any issues because the one, one auto resale place down on Van Born Road near Beach Daily, you know, we looked into it and we found out, I was against that, and we found out that there were several violations and the next day ordinance went in there. And this is a, we, we just can't keep on renewing people's licenses just because their water bill's paid. You know, we need to look into the building. Every time a license, we need to get, jump on this for an ordinance. Anytime a license is up for renewal, we gotta inspect the building, you know, we gotta, you know, go to the Better Business Bureau, see if there's any complaints. I mean, it's just, you just can't.
I mean, complaints in the Better Business Bureau is not gonna stop us from letting them, you know, you'd be, you'd be putting yourself in a lawsuit.
Well, no, it could be some of the quite reason why, one of the reasons we don't renew their license, you know, besides their buildings falling down or.
Well, yeah, that's, that's the case. Saying that, you know, they got bad reviews on Google, like.
Not Google, better, well, okay.
I'm just, I'm giving you the example. Bad reviews are not gonna be, you, you, you would be like privileged to, to being filed, you know, they, they filed lawsuit against us.
That could be one of the reasons. I mean, we need to look into license renewal.
So why don't we have an ordinance being rid up by our corporation council in case you, Tommy, or this didn't be said, but I could tell you this probably the third time this was said where the councilman has requested that we have something in writing that ordinance will report to the clerk's office before we renew them. It's like a seventh tier check. Let me begin with Councilman Saab on that. And, uh, you guys can come up with something. How's that sound, Councilman? All right? Sounds good?
Yeah.
Involve me in that too, okay?
Yep, there you go. I'll let you take both council members.
Counselor chair, I was, I was supposed to get back with Roger at one point about, about over this and I failed to do that, so I mean, it's.
Similar, we did the food truck ordinance that I'm presenting again to the planning commission where we had the checklist of, of agencies every time. So we've, we'll follow the format, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the meantime, we have nothing there and so I don't wanna penalize somebody because we don't have something there. So I think today we're, we're, you know, I, this is my opinion, is we, we are gonna, we should move forward with this.
All three of them?
Yeah.
We're grouping them together?
Yeah.
In the future, let's put them separate.
So.
Cause they've been separate in the past.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
No, just because.
All right, Madam Clerk, please take your call.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Moby Doon?
Yes.
Robert Conston?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
And Tom Wenzel?
No, but yes on Ford Lanes and yes on Denny's Gin Mill, no on the auto sales.
Thank you. Next up, we have thirteen B food truck tank cart license renewal application. Man, my mouth is so dry. Counselor chair?
No, 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 I'm okay. I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve a temporary license, uh, food truck tank or cart license renewal application for Shawarmaj. As outlined in thirteen B.
Second, Saab, seconded by Councilman Conston. Uh, I will give you a quick discussion on this. Um, up until this morning, they just moved their truck and they lined it up based on what needed to happen. When I reached out to the business owner on the gas station on Ford Road and Beach Daily, he said he's out of town, he's not been able to do it. Usually his heavy-duty truck moves it. They actually brought in a company because I told him, if it's not done by this morning, you're getting denied. And by seven-thirty this morning, a tow truck company was there moving it back. And so I let him know that, one, I live around a block, two, there's, uh, there's a resident that continues to call, which there isn't, it's me. No, no, really, it's me, but I just didn't like, well, if he watches this right now, he's probably gonna say, Mo, you're the one, huh? But, but they, you know, they finally did. I know Councilman Saab was a huge advocate for that as well. So I'm glad that we're holding our, our, our businesses, whether it's a brick-and-mortar or a food truck, or holding them accountable. Any other discussion?
Counselor chair.
Councilman Saab.
So my only concern with this is that last year they did the same thing. They moved it after it was approved, was moved back. So I wanna make this conditional. If it's moved back, the license gets suspended.
Uh, counsel chair.
If you could do that, can you, counsel?
They get an ordinance violation.
Yeah, I mean, you would just, you just have to get the ordinance officers to go out there and do their job. Not that they're not, they're doing a great job, but you know.
Counsel chair.
Put on the top of their list. Yep.
Thank you. Um, I recommend we deny it because, I mean, it took a threat for them to comply.
Well, no, what, what it was.
Yeah, you threatened them that, you know, basically, I mean, you were saying, hey, we're not, we're not gonna approve this and I was, I'm with you on it. I mean, but.
I, I wanna explain, the only reason why it was threatened was, so the business owner is out of town and they used his heavy-duty truck to move it. He's out of town, like.
Yeah, it's, it's not.
And so I told him, you have until tomorrow morning. If it's not, you're getting the boot.
Yeah, but it's, you don't, you don't need a semi truck to move that.
Again, I don't know, you know. But Councilwoman?
Counselor chair, um, my problem is, is food truck has continued to operate even though we didn't approve their license. And there was a issue that was possible, yeah, but suddenly we get a permit when we didn't have one.
No, the, so what happened was, cause I called Mr. Watlin, there was two companies that did the SIMAT contract on this, on when, when they did this. Believe it or not, the, the SIMAT was done a year ago. And so when they looked at the first company, that was not included. The second company had it included, but when they, they only checked one box. I made it very, very clear, at least for myself, if this is, you know, you're putting this, it's a hundred, three months. You make a mistake, you've been open for a year and a half. You, you try to, you show us that you're gonna move around in the next three months, guess what? You're being denied completely. But I think they fixed all their issues. We've, we figured out what's going on with the SIMAT. I, I've spoken with not the guy that owns the food truck, the owner of the gas station, who's a, you know, great young man, does a lot of good things. He actually started off as working as a clerk at the gas station. He saved a lot of money. I don't know, maybe he had a lotto ticket or something and he ended up buying the actual business on a loan. So I mean, the guy has a great story. He did it in Dearborn Heights. He lives in Dearborn Heights. I don't personally know him, just hearing his story that he went once from a teller to now owning the, you know, one of the busiest gas stations on a great corner of Ford Road and Beach Daily. That's my opinion. Yep.
Um, okay, so the business, the owner of the gas station is separate from the food truck. So he has nothing to do with it. So he's a good business owner, I agree with that, but this food truck is separate and it's a separate issue. And if he's moving his trailer around from where we specified he needs to be, it's like in our face.
I, I, I agree.
Sorry, you know, and he knew that. I'm not gonna, I don't.
That's okay, we can take this up to a vote. I just want you to keep in mind is that the business owner had given me and said, hey, Mo, like I had a conversation with him. He won't do it again.
But he's separate from the business owner and he's a good guy. He, he's got a good gas station.
They have a contract and I don't know that he, he is breaking your contract. You know, ultimately it's in democracy. If you guys voted down, we voted down. We vote yes, we vote yes. You know, they, they made the changes as of now. So.
My thing is, is that, like the council chair, um, is that I'm willing to approve it with the condition of if they do move it, we suspend their license for a year.
Well, no, I, I don't think you suspend their license for a year. I think you completely revoked their license.
Well, revoked their license and their business.
But that would be ordinance is approved, you'd need ordinance to go out there.
See, now we have to pull an ordinance and that's a totally separate thing.
So, but the good news is, the good news is.
Their license is actually still valid too.
Yeah, and their license, well, their license is still valid, that's why they continue to operate. It doesn't expire, I think, until a couple of days from now. So we were just gonna renew it so that it continued on, uh, but it was gonna overlap, that's number one. Number two, we have three months. If they bend the rules and the summer's coming around the corner, if they bend the rules, they won't get renewed. Okay, well, let's just take it to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
No.
Madam Clerk, please take your call.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
No.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
I'm sorry about that. Uh, Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Conston?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
And Moby Doon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I agree, though. I think if something is not being done, ordinance, keep an eye on it, please. I mean, if we have to have bunker keep an eye on it, you know, he will. Next up, we have members of the public, we have comments from council members.
Counselor chair.
Yes, Councilwoman Breyer.
All right, a couple, well, one is a warning. Uh, there have been a couple cats and a possum poisoned between Andover and Colgate Street. And also I understand that Mobile Home Park there on Annapolis, they're having issues with animals being poisoned. And also Beach Daily and Van Born area, three different areas that animals are being poisoned. So watch out for your pets is kind of the warning on that. And I had a call today from a gentleman that lives near Warren Valley and he has a problem in that Mr. Issa is parking his truck advertising his, um, car wash on the property on Warren Valley. And that's, should be a no-no. So.
Isn't that coming to?
Sorry, I just broke my fist.
Let's tell ordinance, let's tell.
So that, the, the concern is, it's our.
Is it like a big truck? Is it, maybe it's his personal car?
Yeah, but it shouldn't be on our property with advertising on it.
So, council chair, I actually know what she's talking about. It's his car wash van and he uses it to get him, uh, material from Home Depot or wherever he goes.
Well, I, I mean, if we're complaining about Mr. Issa's, uh, who's the tenant at the property, we should be complaining about all the other equipment that city's leaving there, so if you're gonna do it, go across the board.
Okay. Any other discussion, guys? This is public comments. From council members. Any other, uh, Councilwoman?
No, that's all for comments.
Counselor chair.
Councilman Ahmad. Just would like to wish everyone who observed Ramadan, tomorrow is Eid, uh, the holiday, so Eid Mubarak to everyone who observed Ramadan. Ramadan wasn't just about, um, you know, fasting, so hopefully tomorrow is not just about celebrating our, breaking our fast. Hopefully we can celebrate that we're better human beings, better neighbors, better residents and hopefully our prayers are being answered. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Conston.
Just echo what Councilman Ahmad said. I hope everybody had a, a happy Easter and for those who had the discipline to, uh, fast and read the Quran, um, Eid Mubarak and I'm, I'm sure that time was well spent. We all wanna keep in mind, uh, what's going on in the Middle East and I think it's been announced a date to invade Rafa. Uh, over thirty-three thousand civilians have been killed, including thirteen thousand eight hundred children. And let's all pray for a, a ceasefire and a, uh, quick end to the bloodshed and the killings in Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I guess I'll, I'll go up quick. Before I move forward on this, Madam Clerk, I don't know what the ruling is on this. I made a mistake on one of the things that I wanted to remove off of the, um, fund transfers and current claims. And I have here thirty-one to thirty-seven, but I only did thirty-one to thirty-six. Okay, because one thing that I asked was, uh, Shanken-Bushata?
That is thirty-six.
No, that's thirty-seven.
And so Shanken-Bushata was, when we, when we agreed that they were gonna represent the Issa brothers, they were no longer gonna represent the city. Because it becomes a conflict of interest. That, at, at least for myself, that's what, that was when I made that vote and I made that decision. I told myself that I wasn't gonna interfere, let them continue to interfere back and forth with an entity. Hang up real quick. This is, at least for myself. Now, I know that this is something they're working on for the fire station, um, but there, there are hundreds of other firms that you can go out and hire.
Actually, counsel, it was, uh, James Allen that was hired to do that. I know that the firm's merged, but I was working with James Allen for the Warren Golf Course and we needed, um, uh, we actually looked at some lawyers to get an opinion on whether if we can sue the fire station, builders and developers for the fire station.
Where at?
Uh, there was a hundred-twenty-five-page report that was done two years ago, but no one had looked into it before I started. And, um, because the fire station is sinking, we had to have an opinion to see why didn't we bring any legal action back in two thousand three, two thousand four.
Well, why, why didn't we go after Waitrim? Cause they represented it.
Well, no, so who developed it? We were trying to find it, we're still trying to find the contracts, original contracts.
I can tell you, I spoke with Mr. Panetta today, who's been a long-flung resident in the city of Dearborn Heights. Lives on the corner of Kenlock and, uh, and Dockstater.
I'm glad you talked, no, I'm not, I'm just saying, I wanted to see the contracts. We had a hundred-twenty-five-page report done on the condition of the fire station, but apparently there were other repairs done to the fire station, two thousand one, two thousand two, two thousand three. So we had to analyze the whole system and see what was done, but it was actually Jim Allen that did that. I, I don't think I've ever met, uh, Mr. Shank, but.
James Allen.
I know, I'm familiar, I'm familiar with James Allen, class act. He's a class act and I, you know, I appreciate Jim Allen more than you even know it. But he's also, now you said he's merged with, and we don't know that. It doesn't say Jim Allen on there, it says.
Well, I, I don't know how to frame it other than putting what the letterhead has, but that's what it was.
I do appreciate Jim Allen putting on one-seventy-five an hour because that's what we agreed on.
You agreed on when you paid him before.
Just, just moving forward, though.
Okay.
Let's, let's just, let's not get used to this because really it's, if, I don't know if you were here or you were around when we voted on the, uh, on the golf course. One of the things that was discussed was, isn't this a conflict of interest? Matt Shank represents us, Matt Shank is not representing the golf course, uh, or I'm sorry, Shanken-Bushata, Shanken-Bushata. It just, and he represents the mayor personally, he represented the council at one point.
I could do a study for you on it, but I think that how the, um, I don't think it's a conflict of interest with Mr. Allen stepping in.
I understand, but he works for this firm. Moving forward, I've, look, you know, I'm not gonna suspend the rules. I, I think Mr. Allen deserves his thing, but I'm asking you, please, you're on the record, let's not continue to do this anymore.
Yeah, let me give you an opinion on it as well after.
What is it?
We're gonna meet on next, Thursday if it's good. We're gonna meet on those other issues, we can talk about the whole thing.
Sure, sure. I just, I just want you to know that I give a commitment. Now, now when it's Jim Allen, I get it.
Yeah, that's the only one I've been dealing with.
But he's merged, you know, it doesn't say Jim Allen in the associate anymore.
Structured it, but yes.
Thank you. Uh, that's the first thing that I had, so Madam Clerk, we're not gonna suspend the rules. I won't suspend the rules because I know Jim Allen was working on it. Uh, and I've actually had many great conversations with Jim Allen. Very classy man. I believe it's because I initially, we stopped, remember that his last payment with Matt Shank and it turned out to be Jim Allen that was working on the licensing for the, uh.
For the Warren Golf Course.
For the Warren Valley Golf Course. Counsel, kinda like Councilman Ahmad, today we actually just broke, we had our last sip of water, um, for Ramadan, so we're no longer gonna be fasting. I feel like I get to wake up and have a cup of coffee, wake up at nine AM, now I have to wake up at eleven AM. It's just, life's gonna be so much better. Ramadan, Qalam to everybody, Eid Mubarak. You know, this is gonna be a time where a lot of families are gonna spend, uh, you know, in the neighborhoods, at home, barbecuing, having a cookout. You might see twenty, thirty, forty people in the backyard. Uh, just, you seen that happen just wherever and just say Eid Mubarak. Extra cars in the streets too, just be mindful, sometimes, you know, they might park in front of your house. Just understanding, my neighbor, sometimes she says, Mo, your parents could park in my driveway. Uh, my dad's seventy years old and my, my, I have a great neighbor named Cindy and she says, don't make him, you know, don't make him park at the end of the block. Have him park in, and, and I have so much respect for Cindy for that. This year it's not at my house, it's at my in-law's, so I'm, I'm okay. Um, next up that I also wanted to, to bring up is most recently, I had a good friend that I went to school with named Fana Ali. Her daughter was diagnosed with a brain tumor at the age of two. They said she wasn't gonna live more than six to eight months. She lived until four years old. So she saw about a year and a half. Uh, her name was Sandoz. Fana attended Crestwood Riverside, Highview. Uh, she still lives in the city of Dearborn Heights. Our fire department has actually went out because the, the young child was in love with firefighters, wanted to grow up to become a firefighter. Um, she recently passed away just this past week. So my heart goes out to the family of Sandoz, Fana Ali and her husband Michael. But I'd also like to do a quick moment of silence for baby Sandoz who recently just passed away. Thank you. Um, and then there was also one more passing. We were actually supposed to do the recognition awards to our three representatives who we gave the token of appreciations to Lou, Gell and, and Rose. Rose actually just lost a family member as well. And so one of the reasons why we, we postponed it was because Rose lost a family member. So if we can give a moment of silence for Rose and her family. Lastly, my last comment here is, uh, to George. This, you know, past couple of months since being on the council chair since January ninth, uh, I've been working with George from, you know, before the meeting, after the meeting. I'll get an email from George saying these were, was approved. She's on top of her game. I cannot believe how amazing and what big of an asset George truly is. Uh, so George, I thank you for real. At first I thought you were, you would just sit up there and you would think you were just, I thought, okay, she just sitting there maybe answer a couple of phone calls. But no, man, you do a lot of work and, uh, you know, this council body is lucky to have you. So thank you for all that you do, George. I truly mean that. Awesome. Any other council members?
Hearing.
Counselor chair.
Oh, okay. Councilman Saab, I know, I know Councilman Wenzel, you like to go last, so I'll let Councilman Saab go.
Tom, wanna change it up?
No, that's all right.
Fine.
I'm not done writing my notes yet.
Your page, so it doesn't matter. Um, first off, I wanna wish everybody Ramadan Mubarak and Eid Kedim to everyone. I hope everyone's, you know, gets to joy with their families tomorrow and celebrate this, uh, amazing holiday. Or not holiday, or, you know, the end of the month of Ramadan. Secondly is, uh, spring cleanup. Uh, trash is picking up, uh, you know, grass, leaves and everything. Please be considerate. Clean up all the leaves and trash off your properties, every house cleaned and. properties. Every house cleaned and every street and every neighborhood makes a difference. Clean in front of your curbs. Clean your sewer drains in front of your homes. You know, every, every bit helps in the city. Just, you know, do what's yours and what you can in front of your house, and it makes a difference. And for tomorrow, for the Eid, just be considerate with the cars, neighborhoods, and, you know, mosques are going to be packed, restaurants are going to be busy, coffee shops are going to be busy, streets are going to be busy. Just be mindful. Just like any holiday, Christmas, when family members come out of town, everything, be considerate. Let everybody use my driveway. So hope residents can work together on that. Second off, I want to say, you know, what's going on in the Middle East. You know, the news, the news spreads a lot in this country that, that what they want us to hear, you know, and what they want us to see. But it's terrible what's going on in the Middle East. And it's heartbreaking that as we come to an end of Ramadan, that there's people that have been fasting for days and weeks, suffering. You know, it's a, it's a serious, it's an honest series of genocide going on there. And just pray for world peace. And give the mic over to Councilman Wensel.
Thank you, Councilman Sob. And before I hand that over to, I also want to recognize Councilman Conson. I feel like almost every time he's closing out his remarks, he's recognizing the casualties and the atrocities that are happening in the Middle East. And so I also thank you, Councilman Conson, for that. I really do. Thank you.
Councilman Wensel.
Thank you. Thank you so much. First of all, I want to, you know, acknowledge and thank Sue Sahada. Is that how you pronounce your last name?
Yes.
Yes, Sahada. For fine reporting on the events that are happening here in Dearborn Heights and with the city council and other things going on. It's nice to read your articles all the time. Thank you so much for doing that and spending your time here. Because I know she, she revealed to me how much she makes on an article. I don't think she wants me to say how much.
I promise you, no other councilman has this much action.
Yeah. So she's, she's, she's really, you know, doing us a favor by being here. And we appreciate you being here, spending your time. And, you know, this time of year, it's the end of Ramadan, and a few weeks ago was the end of Lent for the Christians. And in both religions, you observe fasting, and that's, that's fine, you know. But I think the main thing is during these, these religious times, you, you look at life a little differently. You treat people better. You take care of yourself better. And it's really important to continue these actions after these, these religious holidays throughout the whole year. I mean, to take care of the more disadvantaged people, your neighbors, help out the elderly. And it'd make the whole world a lot better if we observed all these things throughout the year instead of just for a few months. It's good to do it for a month or so. Don't get me wrong, but it'd be great to do it year round. That'd, that'd be really nice to do. And like Councilman Sob said, you know, it's yard waste pickup time. So you can throw your yard waste out now in the, in the marked containers, plastic containers, or in the official or the approved yard waste bags, paper bags. And they'll, they'll pick it up. And I'm not sure of the total. I think it's like twelve bags, max, or something. You can look at, look online on the website and find out. And I want to mention too, you know, we had our, our family fun night at Annapolis a few weeks back. It was a big success. And we were planning, we're in the process now of planning our next family fun night at Crestwood. And the tentative date is May eleventh. And it's pretty, we're just waiting to finalize the date and all the, the cross the Ts and dot the Is on that. And then our Robishad one's coming up again real soon. So we're looking forward to having that. And thank you for the people that have sponsored it, you know, several council members here, you know, up here, our city treasurer, you know, they're sponsoring this thing. And this event is a hundred percent free. Food, activities, all kinds of activities, you know, for our residents of Dearborn Heights, a hundred percent freed, thanks to our generous sponsors. Thank you, everyone, for sponsoring this event. And we look forward to seeing everyone at the Crestwood and Robishad ones. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Next up, we're going to go to announcements from administration.
Mr. McCaffrey.
Hello, council chair and mayor. Just want to talk about a couple of items. First off, next week is the Friends of the Library Spring Book Sale at Carolyn Candy Library. Thursday, April eighteenth from ten to eight, Friday, April nineteenth from ten to four, and Saturday, April twentieth from ten to four. We have thousands of books in storage ready to find good homes. So come on out and adopt a book. Next Wednesday, April seventeenth at six thirty PM at JFK Library, we will be talking about haunted locations in Michigan with author and paranormal researcher, Chetan Noir. Hear stories of personal experience and the ghosts associated with some of Michigan's haunted locations. Program is for adults eighteen or older. That's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
You said April seventeenth. What's the time?
Six thirty PM at JFK Libraries.
Very. Yep. Madam Clerk.
Council chair, do I always have to follow him? You know, he's.
You know, I almost told him to sit down for a second because I saw you try to swing off.
That's okay. He's just phenomenal.
He really is.
Maybe Angela could tone up the volume or the bass a little bit for Lynn, you know.
Good evening, Council Chair and Mayor.
Lynn Senya, your city clerk. I did get a text from the Crestwood Theater Group, and they apologize for not being here today. But their, their production of Anastasia will be on April twenty-seventh at seven PM, April twenty-eighth at three PM, and May third and fourth at seven PM.
May third. At seven PM, May third?
May third and fourth at seven PM. So April twenty-seventh, May third, and May fourth at seven PM, April twenty-eighth at three PM.
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. I'm not doing it though.
Oh, wow.
Next Tuesday, April sixteenth, we have a special election and for precinct aid only, a special general election to elect the partial term for state rep, state house rep for District Twenty-Five, that only encompasses most of our voters and precinct aid. But because schools in session, we did move this, and we've notified everyone that it'll be here at City Hall in this room on next Tuesday. So there's no meeting next Tuesday of any sorts for city council, because your room will be occupied. But also associated with that, for those that can't make it on Tuesday, City Hall, the city clerk's office will be open this Saturday, April thirteenth, from eight AM to four PM for anyone that wants to get an absentee ballot.
Or anybody that wants to drop you off, any like sweets, desserts.
Yeah, that too.
Lunch.
Okay. Lastly, but certainly not leastly, I'd like to, since our last meeting, I'd like to wish a blessed Easter to our Christian neighbors who have celebrated on March thirty-first. And also to our Muslim neighbors, blessed Eid and war is ugly. And I do watch those, those, those videos. And for any human, let alone seeing the babies that are killed, it's, it's just inhumane.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council chair, well, she's up there. I would like to thank her also for sponsoring our family fund. I keep, she sits right next to me.
You're welcome.
But thank you.
Council chair.
Thanks, Lynn. I'll go with.
Council chair, just have one more administration.
Well, right here, this is.
Oh, okay.
These are announcements from administration as well. She's part of a commission.
All right. My name's Leslie Wynn. I'm speaking as president of TMN nonprofit for a community announcement. Our children are the future, they say. Their safety is paramount. And you can trust our government and lawmakers to put them first. These stories say otherwise and show a need for dire change. I've met some brave and fearless mothers from our local community who are fighting to bring awareness to our child mortality rates. This Mother's Day, TMN will be honoring the lives and legacies of Liliana Kerr, Rain Armstrong, and Joey Smith. Together, their mothers are tackling the lack of grief counseling or support in our community, the need for increased traffic safety, our failing school infrastructures, and a non-existent child safety data tracking system. Imagine dropping your child off to school and being called to say that they are no longer with us in the blink of an eye. Imagine going to the best hospital like you have in Ann Arbor, and your baby's still losing oxygen that would later cause her death. Imagine losing a son to a motor vehicle accident in a school zone that needs traffic signs, traffic lines, and speedometers. For these three mothers, they don't have to imagine. They live with these stories and the pain of losing a piece of their future every day. Come see a softer side to these strong women. With that being said, we would love to invite the Dearborn Heights community to rally behind them by attending our children's legacy brunch on May eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, at eleven AM at OW Best Middle School. Tickets and sponsorships are available on Eventbrite. Also, consider purchasing a table in memory of a child that you have lost or our community has lost. Last, thank you to our sponsors. Our number one supporters, the Dearborn Heights firefighters, True Community Credit Union, the Guidance Center, the Dearborn Heights Police Officer Association, First Independence Bank, the UPS Store fourteen fifty-six, Carol Simpson, the Detroit Weddings, and the Detroit Lions.
Next up, we have Councilwoman Brier.
Okay, just a couple announcements, usual. Ecorse Creek Meeting is on Wednesday, the twenty-fourth of April, six PM at three 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 five, South Beach Daily, the admin building. And then on Thursday, at that same location, from seven to eight thirty, we will have a presentation, questions and answers about resources for seniors, special needs adults, veterans, and programs provided by the VA. It will be presented by Jo Andarga. She's with No Place Like Home Health. And we will also have another lady, Jean Achille. And she has a lot of degrees. And she's going to discuss and take questions regarding advanced directives, medical POAs, and other medical concerns. Refreshments will be available. If you need to RSVP, you can contact me. And that, again, is at seven to eight thirty on the twenty-fifth of April.
Thank you. Next up, we have Corporation Counselor Roger Farina.
Thank you, Council Chair. We have on April eleventh at Thursday at the police station, we're going to have our second ComStat presentation, which will give us updates on the crime statistics in the city, our law enforcement efforts and new developments. We'll talk a little bit about some of our traffic safety procedures that we're working on in training our officers and for the department. Also, on April twenty-fourth, we're going to have our immigration seminar here at City Hall. I've talked to immigration attorneys. It'll be free for the public. So we'd like to have that resource available to our community and our citizens. So, thank you.
Your mic.
Six to eight PM here at City Hall.
Thanks. You, you cut off your mic because you know what? Nobody will know from six to eight, huh? Angela, you see that?
And we're going to have questions.
I'm just joking. Thanks. Thank you. All right. Do we have any other comments for announcements? Seeing no, I'm going to go to, we're going to go to Zoom first since I got two hands over here up. We have.
And I did get a, I did get a phone call that someone wants to be on. They can't raise their hand.
Okay. So we're going to go with the first two, and we'll go with that person third. Thank you. We're going to go with Mr. Shahadi. And then we'll go with Mr. Dana. And then we'll go with the last person who couldn't put their hand up. There?
Good evening, everyone.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street you live on.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Shahadi, Hickory Wood Court, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County. My name is Mike, again, calling with regard to my sister-in-law that lives at Pinlot. In observance of end of Ramadan tomorrow, she's hosting a family breakfast around ten, ten thirty. And it happens that tomorrow is the garbage day for her. So I called today the traffic division at the Dearborn Heights Police, and I got no answer. Then I called dispatch, spoke to Roger. Roger said that they don't control whether tickets will be given on garbage day if there's a holiday and people are parked on the street. He transferred me to City Hall to Stephanie. Stephanie transferred me to, I believe, another gentleman by the name Hart, and I had to leave a message. I just want to know whether, if there's an exception tomorrow for being, again, end of Ramadan, if we will be ticketed visiting family members to wisdom holiday, you know, Eid Mubarak. Thank you, everyone, and Eid Mubarak to all of you.
Mr. Shahadi, Eid Mubarak to you and your family. What I will tell you is, I don't know if you're going to get a ticket. But what I can tell you is if you're blocking the garbage bin, your sister's garbage probably not going to be picked up. But I know, Mr. Swob, do you, Swob, you want to speak on this? Our chief is here. Maybe he can answer any questions. Hang on one second. Your time is paused, by the way.
Yeah. So in regards to any type of violations written to cars that are blocking trash cans, unless, I guess, city council wants to suspend the, you know, the law, I can't tell you if an officer would, would find a certain area of the city to be, or a car in a certain area of the city to be in violation or not. I don't have the authority to, to stop someone, an officer, from writing a ticket that's lawfully, you know, on the roadway. But, you know, I think that city council probably could do something like that.
Okay. Well, this council's okay with asking?
I guess we'd have to ask Roger.
Roger, tomorrow's Ramadan. It's like giving a ticket on Christmas.
I mean, if there's a way, if there's a way we, we couldn't, I mean, I prefer not to. But at the end of the day, if, what if a resident calls and says, hey, I want my garbage picked up? Is this something we can work out with the garbage company to have them come back?
Yeah, I think we, we do it case by case basis. And if it occurs, then they can contact us, and then we can deal with that at the scene if it comes up as.
Our officers will use discretion on doing, doing that.
Yeah, just while, you know, like I said earlier, like my neighbor lets, you know, and ultimately people's trash don't want to get picked up. And I know what's tomorrow? Wednesday? Tomorrow's Wednesday. So like my, my parents' side will be picked up tomorrow. And yeah, I mean, I can see, Mr. Shahadi, I can see your point. I was honest. I mean, it's a tough, you're, look, you're the.
And at the end of the day, you know, you know, we, we like to use discretion, you know. Maybe in the future, maybe we reach out to the garbage company and say, hey.
Well, it's not, it's not, I don't know if you, there, you see, what happens is Ramadan gets changed ten days every year. So it's hard because if they follow the lunar calendar instead of a regular calendar, whereas Christmas is December twenty-fifth every year, every year Eid is on ten days behind. And sometimes it goes to scholars one day they believe that you got to go thirty days based on the lunar eclipse. Is it today? Is it tomorrow? Like some people are fasting tomorrow, are having Eid yesterday, today, or Thursday.
All right. Yeah. I mean, we're going to use discretion. You know, I'll tell my officers to use discretion.
He's on Kenlock Street. He's asking for.
I can't specifically give, you know, permission to people to park in certain areas. I don't have the authority to do that. There's an ordinance. I can ask officers to use discretion and then possibly, you know, hey, knock on the door if we can get the, you know, people to at least move their, that one car or something. But I can't, I can't make any promises. But I will do my best to make sure our guys use discretion to.
Roger, what do you think?
Council chair. Yeah, council chair.
And you know what? If there are some.
Your mic, your microphone.
Green light to people to go and violate because they think, oh, it's okay to do it now. But case by case, use discretion. We'll use discretion.
Listen, let's also call it for what it is. Tomorrow's the holiday. The majority of this community is going, forty-five or fifty percent of this community is going to be celebrating tomorrow. And you know what they do on their holiday? They go to their families' homes. Like, I'm going to my in-laws'. Luckily, it's in Dearborn, and I hope Dearborn wouldn't do that to me. But I'm going to be going to my in-laws'. And I, and I can assure you that if it's garbage day, I'm not going to park on Warren. I'm going to park on Rutter Street.
Council chair.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think it's an issue of writing a ticket or not. It's, it's an issue of getting your garbage picked up or not. You would have to.
Reach out to priority.
Yeah. I mean, you, yeah, you have to reach out to priority and say, can you come the following day? Send a truck down there. You know, I mean, I don't have the authority to do that. I mean, it's, it's a good thing. I mean, celebrating a holiday is a good thing. But, you know, I mean, I don't know. I mean, it's.
I will tell you this, Councilman, and I'm, you know, you and I don't really disagree a lot. But I tell you this, if this was Christmas, you'd be making sure that nobody got a ticket on Christmas.
Yeah, I know. But they don't pick up garbage on Christmas.
I know.
Or Easter.
So maybe in the council, council chair.
I just, yeah, I'm saying, I'm all, I'm all favor for celebrating.
I know, I know, Councilman, hang on. So are we saying, though, because, because we can't, because it's not a federally recognized holiday, we should, we should go and, you know, penalize the community, you know?
I'm not saying write a ticket. That's not the thing. It's, it's, you're not, I don't, I don't.
I can tell you right now, priorities, priority will make it right.
Yeah, let's just say, don't write any tickets tomorrow. But we got to figure out some way to pick the garbage up.
Yeah, I think, I think priority will go over and beyond to make sure that they help out.
Then, then I'm sure, I mean, I don't have the authority to call Paul up and say, you know, come back on Thursday to pick the garbage up. I hope we can.
No, I'll send him an email tonight. I'll CC everybody on there.
Council chair. That's, that's what we got to do. I mean, I'm all for it. I mean, celebrate.
Councilwoman's next.
Yeah. Let's, let's do it that way. Let's see if Paul can do that and, and that all the residents.
Councilman, it's nine o'clock right now. Tomorrow. Tomorrow's Eid. Tomorrow, tomorrow's Eid.
Well, they, I know, but tomorrow's garbage day.
Yeah.
I think in the future.
I'll text Paul right now.
There you go. Hey, Ramadan.
I think in the future, we need to come up with some kind of solution with priority, with priority, maybe claim it's a holiday for Dearborn Heights that day next year.
Love that.
And then have them come a day later, like they do on all the other holidays.
There's two Eid's a year. There's gonna be another one coming up in about three, four months, right?
Well, we'll figure it out.
There you go.
We'll be proactive from now on.
I love that, I love that idea. They're great ideas. Anyway, we're now holding the police accountable, we're now holding Priority accountable.
Everybody wins, they get their trash picked up, and people get to celebrate.
Mr. Un was here right now, he'd be going crazy. Mr. Shahadi, does that answer your question? All right.
He's, he's at the bottom.
You wanna unmute him?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much, Councilpeople, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish, just state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on.
Good evening, everyone. Dana Parrish, Burnley Parks, Dearborn Heights. Those have known me for a while. Councilman Constan, hello. Councilwoman Malowski Maxwell. I've known you both for quite some time, probably, probably longer than anyone else on the council. Would not always agree, but, but I think, I think we can all agree that we have the ability to disagree and still, still get things done. I think elected people are there for one reason and one reason only, and that's to work for the people elected you. It's sometimes difficult, I won't get too touchy, but it sometimes gets difficult at times when it appears that some folks, and this, this isn't just aimed at the council, elected people will take their personal agenda on, when becoming elected. You have to let that go. You have to let your personal agenda, your personal items go. You don't represent yourself as an elected official. Like I said, this is not aimed at the council, this is aimed at every elected official. Have to let your personal agenda go. Put this, put your little boo-boo feelings aside, and you work for the residents, the people who elected you. Handle your little boo-boo feelings aside, not on the stage, not in front of the public. The other thing I think that, that the two folks that I mentioned know that I'm, I'm a pretty big stickler on is integrity, being honest. I got into a pretty big situation with the previous administration over integrity. And Council Chair Badun, I sent you a letter on January 6, 24th, and I'm not gonna say anything about that letter except that, it was an email, I'm sorry, except that the person that it was regarding had never gotten back to me. I would hope that, I know you can't affect that yourself because you're only in charge of yourself, but it had to do with integrity, that person's integrity, and if it isn't handled, I will bring it up again. It was January, but I will bring it up again, and it will probably be embarrassing to that person. So I would rather that that person handle that in a way that's very professional, because I do take integrity and honesty and openness extremely important. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time, and those that went to Ramadan, I know it was very difficult for you, and hopefully everybody has a, has a good time getting with, back with their family and enjoying themselves again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. I will, I know exactly what email you're discussing, I will reach out to that individual. I know that individual was on medical leave for a little, so I will give them the benefit of the doubt. Hopefully you can hear back from that individual. Thank you. All right, the person that was calling in on Zoom?
Gary Miyake, Plainfield Street, Dearborn Heights. I understand you wanted me to answer a question, so since I'm available, I guess I could answer the question.
The question, I believe, was about special legal counsel? And you have a closed session or an open session?
Personnel issue.
And the personnel issue?
You can have an open session unless there's going to end up being an issue that involves specific issues having to deal with federally protected or state-protected privacy issues. That does not include evaluations, that does not include issues regarding performance. I would be, you know, it'd be more along the lines of, hey, I had to take a medical leave, or I had to take an FMLA leave, something of that sort. In general, though, no, you do not need to end up having a, a closed session. It's my understanding this has to do with concern about the HR director and a vote of no confidence. If it just generally has to deal with performance and meeting city council's expectations, there is no requirement to go into a closed session.
Council Chair, I disagree, and I'll make sure that it's known that it is at risk, and I disagree with Mr. Miyake on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miyake, thank you, Roger. Please, Roger, go to the Council Chair. Roger, I mean, Gary, are you done?
I'm done.
All right, thank you. Next up, we are going to go out to public comments, seeing none no more on Zoom. Well, hang on, we're gonna go, we're gonna go.
I know, I was just talking on Gary's comments, I mean.
I'll sell his study session, and if they want to show up, they want to show up.
All right, well, yeah, okay.
All right.
Hi.
Just state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on.
Sue Kaminsky, Amboy Street, Dearborn Heights. So at the beginning of the meeting, in public comments on agenda items, I mentioned item number 37. I know Council Chair Mr. Badun tried to retract that and basically apologized and wanted that not to be paid. I'm just very disappointed that all of council pretty much ignored it, no one brought it up for discussion. Council voted twice, that I'm aware of, not to pay any future claims for this person, and just because he joined another firm doesn't excuse that, and I'm really sorry, Council, and you guys know I'm typically on your side, but if administration did this, you'd be all over it, so I'm really irritated. That's it.
Thank you. Roger, moving forward, we did make an agreement to not use that law firm. It is what it is, and it's for no other reason than it's a conflict of interest.
Well, let me look at the conflict. I wasn't here at the time that you claimed the conflict, I will look at it, but again, and because she's claiming that it's a conflict, doesn't mean necessarily that it is.
But we voted on it.
But it's Jim, it's Jim, not Jim Ali.
Nothing, nothing from the audience.
Thank you. I will look at it, and I'll write an opinion for you.
That's it, thank you. Ma'am, how you doing? Long time, I haven't seen you here in a long time.
Angela Venegas, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights. I'm here about the email that I sent you last Thursday, March 28th, about Peter and I went and cleaned up Warren Avenue, and we found a loaded, fully loaded 9mm in the grass just west of Charlesworth on the south side of Warren. My concern is the kids. Riverside is just up the street, and is there something in place at the schools to keep the kids safe? Would a kid know what to do if they found that gun? Are we educating them at all? There's a lot of what-ifs that could have happened, and I'm just glad two adults found the gun and not a kid. While we were out cleaning, we had four kids walking probably back from the dollar store or the gas station buying candy while we were out cleaning Warren.
I will tell you guys, pause your time, please. Angela did send me this, if you guys want to wonder how she found this, Angela has the tendency of going through the community on major roads and cutting the grass herself, not waiting on DPW, not waiting on DPS, not waiting on the state, the county, or the city. She takes it upon herself to go out there with her weed whack, she picked up, I think, five or six garbage bags of debris.
Peter and I on Warren.
Eight or nine.
No, Peter and I did that.
Peter and you.
Peter's with me this time, my neighbor.
And while they were doing this, I believe they found a fully loaded handgun, they reached out to the police department. She then sent me an email, I forwarded over to the email as her request to the council and to the police chief and the mayor. Last I checked, the mayor told me he sent it to the chief. Chief, I believe, said he was working on a few things.
Yeah, I spoke to him, yep.
What is it?
I spoke to the chief.
Okay.
So.
And so.
My big concern is, you know, we got public safety going on, and we got kids at a school, little school right up the street. What are we teaching our kids at school?
Thank you so much. Thank you for all that you do, Angela, for real.
Council Chair, Council Chair, there was a story on the news today about a, I can't remember which city it was, but a veteran found in his house that he had stored for many years a hand grenade, and he brought it into the police department, and they said, hey, never touch it, right? You call us, and we'll come and take care of it. I mean, that's the kind of education we should have in our schools, and we should tell these kids. I was on vacation down in Florida last week, me and Caden, my little guy Caden, eight-year-old, were walking through a parking lot, and he found a bullet. He picked it up, he said, look what I found. And I said, down on the wall, I said, the saltwater could have gotten to it or something, you know, it could go off. And he said, well, let's take it in someplace. I said, no, we went to the hotel manager's office, and said, there's a bullet sitting on the wall down there. And he said, what do you want me to do with it? I said, I don't know, I don't want, I want you to just call the police or something. But we should educate, it's, it's a simple thing. You see a bullet, you see a gun, you see a knife, you see a syringe, you don't touch them.
Call 911.
You don't touch it, you report it right away, and that's, that's an easy lesson that these kids could be taught, you know, on a regular basis, or, you know, by the way, you know, once or twice a year, if you see something dangerous, don't touch it, report it.
You know what, that's, I like that, I like that, I do, thank you.
Maybe our public safety committee could look into something like that as far as making that.
Yeah. Thank you. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on.
Rose Tripeppy, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights. I want to thank you very much for the certificate, but as I talked to you before, those two people are ones, they're great, they're always there, and they work their fannies off, not me. But I appreciate you honoring me, thank you very much, and also enjoy your holiday tomorrow. Happy Ramadan, all you Christians, happy Easter late, but enjoy yourselves.
Thank you so much.
Here comes my girl.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street. Tom, you know I love you. The used auto car that you're referring to on Van Born Road? I love them. I've gotten two cars from them. They've been in this community for over 27 years, I think we've calculated. They're amazing. I know the lot is tight and whatnot, but just, I wanted to put that out there and that they're amazing. Thank you, Leslie, for everything that you do, you're amazing, and you had me in tears. I just have a question, and I feel like I'm gonna be picking feathers here. The vote of no confidence on the HR director, how is that any different from what happened to the police department? Just some food for thought. But thank you, guys, and I did take notes on the gun and what to do, so I do have meetings set up with the superintendents, so that will be brought up.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Vistrakowski, Mayfair Street.
Baker Street.
Columbia.
Who's Mayfair Street? All I know is Zo Harris.
I can't, because he's got me laughing. Please move. Vistrakowski, Baker Street, is it?
Baker, Baker Street, yeah.
Baker's, Mayberry City, I wish. We're handing out liquor licenses or renewing liquor licenses, but I haven't heard anything in a while about the liquor license for Warren Valley. The only reason I ask this is because if we've got food vendor trucks over at the old La Scawa location, why can't we use a couple of food vendor trucks or a liquor truck at Warren Valley? Excuse me, so when people playing golf want to have a beer or whatever, sit down and have a burger or chicken?
There's a, there is a food, there is a food truck there, and it's bring your own beer or liquor.
Okay.
I don't know if you can or can't.
I don't know if you can do that or not, but, you know, we got an attorney over there.
We get them for our festivals. Yeah, temporary.
Get them temporary for the day. I know we went through it with Kim Sohrlass, because I think the application came in late, but I, I know they're working on those issues as well.
Okay, and speaking of the golf course, I spoke to Mr. Conrad a while ago, and there is still debris left over from one of our storms in the west parking lot. So can we get that picked up by DPW and the leaves that are sticking there? I know I've only got a minute left.
Let's do me a favor, apologize your time, before you leave, give your contact info to George, please connect them with the DPW or ordinance.
I already talked to him.
Well, just let's do it one more time, now that's on the record.
Okay. Also, getting back to this property on George Street here, that pile of stuff that's been sitting out there by the apartment complex, I believe the owner was told by the ordinance to pick that stuff up and get it cleaned up. Can we get that property cleaned up or not? Because this is right on the entrance near, coming into City Hall, right off of Telegraph. So can we do something with it or no?
Sure. Write that down also to your notes with George. Nobody here.
Okay, and I was gonna ask the mayor something, but he left as usual, so, hey, yeah, imagine that. Thank you for your time, happy end of Ramadan.
Thank you.
And enjoy your Eid.
Council Chair?
Yeah.
I just got done communicating with Priority Waste, and they said they would.
Accommodate.
Accommodate, and all we have to do is get them that, the address of that block.
I want you to know something, Priority Waste will, it seems to always go above and, they may not pick it up always on time, but they really deliver, and thank you, Paul, for that.
And I, I need to get the address somehow.
Well, I mean, whatever, if it misses, well, who knows? They might pick it up early enough, and the garbage already picked up.
You can text Mike.
I did, I just text Mike, I'm waiting for him to get back to me here.
Thank you. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on, you have extra minute, just like the gentleman in the back.
My name is Leslie X. My address is Annapolis Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, 48125. I apologize in advance as these holy months awaken a giant. I have a lot to say and not enough time. As the holy month of Ramadan and the celebration of Lent come to an end, I had the opportunity to fast from social media and food simultaneously. In the light of a public activist or a federal plant, depending on who you ask, constantly sowing hate and vitriol in our community, I thought I would share some light. I want to publicly thank Mo Badun and Hassan Ahmad for privately inviting me to participate in Ramadan. Those of us who pray, meditate, and wait for guidance from God, Allah, Jehovah, whatever you call them, know that we change the world through building each other up. This one man had a whole fire station and countless elected officials fasting and breaking bit, and breaking bread like they were the disciples. Meanwhile, a hater is popping a blood vessel over a yard sign. Don't let them bring the pitchforks out about missing an invite. This is your holiday, your tradition, they should reach out to you for guidance, like you did for me during Black History Month, and I did for you during Ramadan. I won't even start on the pictures of my brother's pilgrimage. You both are excellent role models for your faith. This opportunity brought me closer to Christ, my calling, and my neighbors. Unfortunately, this same tyrant, I mean activist, has made our meetings a circus and unsafe for those of us who have sensitive nervous systems. So I don't come as often, but believe me, others feel this way and are scared to step up. Thank God Almighty, my leaders were never scared. This brings me to my next speech by any means necessary. A little backstory, as much as I come in peace, I had three mental health breakdowns last year, partly as a result of the lack of action and stalling of this body in general. I am respectfully speaking to the people of Dearborn Heights through this body. The leaders I respect know and knew that the power is within the people, that any person in a position of service knows it's about others, that you can't be scared to shine your light upon the darkness. Don't assign us any more tasks until you fund us. We created Thrive by Any Means Necessary TMN and resurrected the CCRC under the leadership of Dan Puleko, God rest his soul, due to the dire need of DEI and change in our city. Neither TMN or CCRC have been funded by the. Neither TMN or CCRC have been funded by the city of Dearborn Heights as a public stance of support for either initiative. In fact, it is my position that both of them have been constantly blackballed, blackballed and derailed. Thank Allah that Muslim, our Muslim ancestor Malcolm taught us to thrive and survive by any means necessary. I leave you with the words that are, his words that are still somehow relevant today, and I don't apologize for the twist because we need a revolution. So we formed an organization which has the same aim and objective, to fight whoever gets in our way, to bring about a complete independence of the people of African descent here in the Western Hemisphere, and first, here in the United States, and bring about freedom of these peoples by any means necessary. That is our motto. We want freedom by any means necessary. We want justice by any means necessary. We want equality by any means necessary. We do not feel that in 2024, living in a country that is supposedly based on freedom and supposedly the leader of the free world, we do not think we should have to sit around and wait for some segregationist congressmen and senators and a president from Scranton, Pennsylvania to make up their minds about our people being due a degree of civil rights. No, we want it now, or we don't think anyone should have it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Leslie.
Anyone else?
Please join us up here, sir. Thank you.
Could I pass out a handout?
Please to the clerk.
Go ahead, sir.
He's got an extra minute. Go ahead.
There's an old saying called penny wise, pound foolish, and that generally means when you spend way too much time discussing small amounts of money. So what do I mean? The recreation director wanted, a couple of months ago, wanted to increase their, uh, the spending power from fourteen hundred dollars to five thousand, but the city council accepted thirty-five hundred. So she accepted the thirty-five hundred, and they were disc, and that was discussed over twenty-five minutes. That was way, way too long. Now, around July twenty-twenty-two, the city's, the city's money managers gave a presentation on their police fund results, and I believe they said they lost seventeen percent better than the market that was down about nineteen percent. This, I think they said, to be equal, that was equal to approximately a loss of forty million dollars. When has a city ever lost forty million dollars? So if you, so thirty-five hundred dollars was debated over twenty-five minutes. Forty million dollar loss was debated, was debated over a minute. And who was, who did the debating? Uh, Ray Muscat asked them, could we have done something to mitigate this forty million dollar loss? They didn't say, but there really is a way to do that. And then Mr. Wensel asks, what, what extra things could we have done to, to also mitigate that? And there's something else you could be done, but they didn't say it. You didn't, nobody knew. Okay? So I figured out the math. If you, if you debate thirty-five hundred dollars over twenty-five minutes, how long should you have debated over a forty million dollar loss? In math, you cross, I was a teacher. So you cross multiply, and it comes out to two, the, the debate of forty million dollars should have been debated not one minute, but two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand minutes, which comes out to a hundred ninety-eight days. So, so, and this, and, um, this is sort of speaking to Mo, 'cause he's in favor of, you know, speeding things up, I think. So that's, that's a good thing. The, the chart on the bottom, where it's Dow Jones Industrial Average, uh, December fourteen, the A part was up, B down, C was way up, D is down, E is way up. So the stock market really is very, very choppy. So there is a way to, to mitigate the, and the B part, thirty-six percent drop, or the D part, minus nineteen percent. But the money managers never tell you how to do that. The worst, the worst, uh, uh, institution in this country for, for, for not talking about big amounts of money to be lost is the federal government. And currently, there's thirty-four, thirty-four trillion dollars this country's in debt. Guess how long it took for the first trillion to be accom, to be accomplished? Two-hundred-and-five years. What's the, when it went from thirty-three trillion to thirty-four trillion, how long did it take?
One hour.
Well, six months. So, so it's, it's just something to, to consider. And then also, late, everybody was talking some, some things about the, the Mideast. Late this afternoon, there was something I thought was really, really scary. About ten months ago, the, uh, Israel bombed the government building in, I think, Iran. A few days later, Iran says, we're gonna bomb something in Israel. Israel today says, we're gonna bomb your, if you do that, we're gonna bomb your nuclear facilities. Holy cow. I mean, that's just, that's really something. And that would cause your, your stocks to go straight down ten, ten to twenty percent, maybe in a day.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So it's just something to think about.
Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Tom, councilman. We're trying to break fast. Come on.
I know, I know. Real quick, though, um, Tom Wensel, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights, speaking as a resident. City council approved posting positions for ordinance, and I, I, I'm, as a resident, we don't have enough ordinance officers because there's so many violations around the city. Um, and it's been, next week will be a month that this, that the, the ordinance officer positions haven't been posted. What are you guys gonna do about it?
Well, you had, we had a motion of no confidence on here. The councilman wants, so that's speaking, as for it to be, to go to a study session. So.
But I mean, you can, you can have a no confidence vote, but how, how are we going to get these jobs posted? And, and, uh, and I wanted to, uh, have these jobs filled by May first, too.
Councilor, is, is the councilman indicating that he now is running the administration, and he can pick and hire and appoint people to be, to these jobs?
No, I think this resident is saying, asking this council, what do you think was gonna happen? I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond to him. Uh, and I'm gonna tell him, we are not the administration. We are the legislative body. The administration has to make those decisions. That's really all I can really say to you on that.
Well, city council approved and directed HR department to post the positions, correct?
Ultimately, it, look, man, it starts at the top. If the mayor wants you to post it, she's gonna post it.
Okay.
All right? That's, that's the answer. Is that the answer you're looking for? Because really, that's the answer.
That's not the answer I'm looking for.
That is the reality.
Can, who po, who's in charge of posting jobs?
Look, if the mayor said to, to his appointee at Will Empoy, appointing appointee says, I need you to post this, it's gonna be posted.
So it's, it's administration's, uh?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Please, I mean, I, I think Ray Charles can see that.
Okay, so, uh, okay, as, as, as a councilman, I'll reach out to the administration tomorrow and, and see, get an answer.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Second to fourth. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Have a great day.